Good evening, and we will be performing in Greece in, is it 27 days? 27 days we're traveling through, so our first few are in Arizona.
Mr. Frager, center of the live?
Yes, sir.
And for what?
Fantastic. This meeting is a public session of Council Rock Board of School Directors. This meeting is being recorded by the Council Rock School District and may be recorded by members of the audience. If we could start with a pledge of allegiance, led by Jennifer Park.
Hi, Jen.
Hi. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please stay standing for the national anthem, except for the orchestra. She does need to sit. Evening, Mr. Simon.
Good evening, Mr. Klein. I should say kalispada. That's Greek for good evening.
I was gonna say, you guys had any place special these days?
And I think the countdown of kids have been keeping it's 27 days until we leave for Greece. May 20th to May 27th. I can imagine the kids are very excited about it. We have two concerts in Athens. One is in Anna and Maria Kaluda Theater with an exchange group, Illyon Music School. We'll be playing side by side with them. And also at the Piraeus Municipal Theater, which is this gorgeous old opera-style theater. We'll be performing there as well. And onboard the Celestial Olympia Cruise Ship, our chain orchestra will be performing there as well. So we're gonna be performing a very, a short piece that features Krista Donahue and Cecilia Rebetta on a piece called Nason Dorma.
The party stopped. I'm gonna stand. Mr. Simon, they were fantastic. So, we wish you the very best as you travel to Greece. We look forward to hearing all about the great trip and the wonderful performances. I don't think I realized the occupational hazard, however, of playing the trombone and watching these two guys. I was a little worried that dental work was gonna be necessary as they were slamming those slides down. Yeah, I think Jen was at risk. Thank you, Chris, very much for coming out. Thank you, everyone, for spending time with us this evening.
Thanks, everyone. Madam Secretary, can I have a roll call, please?
Mrs. Brooks?
Here.
Mr. Byler?
Mr. Byler's on the way on family business.
Dr. Foster?
Here.
Mr. Gruff?
Does.
Mrs. McKessy?
Here.
Mrs. Sexton?
Present.
Mrs. Thomas?
Here.
Mr. Block?
Here.
Mr. Abington?
Here.
Mr. Klein, can we have a superintendent's report, please?
Absolutely. Just some announcements of things that are coming up. This is, as everybody knows, a very busy time in Council Rock. These are just a couple of the highlights. For those of you really interested in some outstanding theater, the Stock and Bus Theater Group and the Council Rock North Music Department proudly present Jason Robert Brown's Psalms for a New World. Performances will be held on Thursday, April 30th, Friday, May 1st, and Saturday, May 2nd at 7:00.
And you can come and try to catch me in a 5K, which is not really hard. We have some exciting news from Council Rock High School South, not just the wonderful work that you heard from the orchestra tonight, but on Monday, April 27th, a team of students, six students from Council Rock High School South, will be flying to Johnson Space Flight Center and Ellington Air Force Base in, in Texas to participate in the NASA Zero-G flight program. This is the second year that students from Council Rock South will participate in this program. This year's experiment will be the first stage of launching a plug-and-play vibration-reduction incubator testing chamber configured for the nano-lab test modules for use on the International Space Station. That was all done by the kids. The kid, the senior Sam Clough, Sam Sadow, and Jonathan Moore will be going up on the spit, in the C9 plane. Joya Termini, Tim Avarenov, and Sam Kreisman have worked, will be on the grounds crew, and all six have worked hard along with four or two other students in the NASA Hunch Program to plan, build, test this project. There's gonna be a lot that comes forward from this group, and they're planning on coming back and giving you a over, a great overview, but I do want to thank ahead of time, Council Rock South teacher Fred Bauer, who's the project advisor. He'll be going down with the kids. And Joe Warwick and Jerry Feder are both science teachers at Council Rock South for the work that they've done in supporting these kids. Those of you that know about the NASA Hunch Program, these kids have been coming in in the morning at 5:00 a.m., staying till 8:00, and doing all of the interesting work that's required to have a project accepted by NASA to go up on the, what they call the vomit comet, the Zero-G flight simulator. So, it's a fantastic experience for our kids and a wonderful reflection on Council Rock High School South. As a community announcement, on Saturday, April 25th, Bucks County will be offering its Prescription Over-the-Counter Drug Takeback Day. This is important. From 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m., this is an opportunity for the public to safely dispose of any unwanted, unneeded, or expired prescription or over-the-counter medication. All medications collected will be incinerated, thus eliminating the risk of diversion and protecting the water supply. This program is free to anyone, and it's anonymous. All medications will be accepted, including pills, capsules, ointments, et cetera. Needles will not be accepted. Local drop-off spots in Council Rock include Richborough Shop and Bag, Newtown Township Municipal Building, Upper Makefield Township Police Department, and Newtown Borough Fire Station. There are a lot more places to drop off. You can visit the link on the website that is attached to the Prescription Drug Takeback Day. Council Rock School District offers a variety of summer programs. They are on the web right now. Summer programs include a writing academy, literacy support, STEM Academy, and an algebra academy. We also offer camp invention and a summer music program. You can find out all about those summer programs by visiting Council Rock website, www.crsd.org. And finally, Council Rock Spring and Summer Community Aquatic Programs are now in a registration phase. Classes include children's swimming lessons, group and private, summer recreational swimming hours, and a competitive swim training program for swimmers eighth grade and up. Registration begins on Monday, April 27th, from 3:00 to 7:00 p.m., Monday to Friday, at the pool lobby area, door 3A at Council Rock High School North. You can also check out the website, www.crsd.org backslash aquatics, and click on the Summer 2015 to view the brochure and the registration form. If you have any information, contact Brian Johnson at the Council Rock High School North Aquatic Center.
Mark, I have one ask, if you would. Could you update, as part of your superintendent's report, we had the e-waste collection this week, this past weekend, and it was a overflow capacity, and maybe you just wanna take a moment?
Sure. So, with apologies, and I called Senator Tomlinson's office to apologize personally. Senator Tomlinson had his kid expo on Saturday. We, at the same time, offered our e-waste collection program, which usually brings out 20, 30, 50 cars. Because a lot of the other e-waste programs in the county had been canceled, the courier picked up and announced our collection, and a lot of people came. In fact, we estimate that there were over 500 cars there to drop off televisions, electronics, things like that, which created a backlog of traffic in and around Council Rock South. I'm told that at one point in time, it backed up all the way through Almshaus Road onto the light. We do apologize for that. We had no way of knowing how many people would show up for that e-waste program. It is a great reflection on people wanting to get rid of electronics and dispose of them properly, but we were not prepared for the number of people that came. So, again, apologies to Senator, Senator Tomlinson and his group.
And just to be clear, that's a service that the district doesn't pay for, that's, that's a service that's provided under a contract that the district has for disposing of our own equipment. That company provides this as an added benefit with no charge to either the consumers or the taxpayers.
That's correct.
Thanks, Mark.
Thank you, Mr. Klein. We'll move to public comment. Public comment is an opportunity for members of the public to address the board. We would ask that you limit your comments to no longer than three minutes. Please consider the fact that there may be young children in the audience who are watching this broadcast live on CRTV when speaking. It is our goal to maintain a respectful environment so that members of our community have an equal opportunity to address the board without interruption. While the board welcomes your ideas and will consider them in deliberating an issue, we may not respond to your comments or questions. First on the list, we have Barry Bailey.
Good evening. My name is Barry Bailey from Richborough. We realize that many times this forum is used to complain and argue for better or different services. I'd like to take this opportunity to read a letter of appreciation composed by my wife and I, who have two children who have gone through Council Rock schools, and to thank this district for the support, especially for the arts. Dear Mr. Klein and members of the school board, we would like to acknowledge and thank the district for supporting an excellent music program. Our daughter Monica Bailey graduated in 2013, and our son Brett will graduate this year. Both learned stringed instruments and choir in elementary school and continue to play and sing through high school. Monica is currently monitoring, minoring in music. Brett has applied and auditioned to college for music composition. Without the first-rate mentoring he had been given and performance opportunities, his resume wouldn't be as solid. As part of the application, most colleges give music theory tests. Fortunately, Brett was able to take AP Music Theory in his junior year and was more than adequately prepared for this test. This year, he's taken Honors of Music Arrangement, Music Technology, Choir and Orchestra. Both of our children were encouraged and taught by motivated orchestra and choir directors through elementary, middle, and high school. We must especially appreciate the support of Mr. Simon and Mr. Axler. As part of the music composition application, a student must submit written and recorded music scores. Brett was able to enlist the help of talented fellow students to perform his pieces, while Mr. Simon assisted in rehearsing and conducting for a chamber orchestra performance recording. And Mr. Axler helped with this recording and editing of this work. The finished product sounds amazing and very professional. This could not have been accomplished without the outstanding, caring teachers in the Council Rock School District. Both have gone out of their way to give these students some incredible venues to perform locally and abroad. We know that when budgets are evaluated, music curriculum is often considered for cuts. The experience that both of our children were afforded through Council Rock Music Program was exceptional. We want to thank the district for supporting the music program and hope that future students will be allowed the same top-notch learning and performance opportunities that our children have experienced. Sincerely, Barry Bailey and Rose Jardine. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bailey.
Thank you. Next, we have Stephen D'Amico. Okay, Scott Rakestraw?
Good evening, everyone, and thank you for affording me a few minutes to address the board. I am Scott Rakestraw. I'm a 15-year resident of Upper Makefield, and I had the pleasure of having two children move all the way through from Salt Heinstone to be recent graduates at Rock North High School. The reason I'm here tonight is to voice support for a proposal before you regarding an honors research program in STEM education within the district, neglected first at Rock North. When my wife and I were looking for a place to move 15 years ago, we chose specifically the Council Rock School District because of the quality and the reputation of the education that was afforded, and we were not disappointed. We felt that both of our kids got great education. Over that time, I had the distinct pleasure of meeting some of the science faculty, particularly at Rock North, and a couple in particular have shown the motivation, the passion, the drive, which I think has led to the proposal before you tonight, to take science education in the district to a level which I think is absolutely necessary and should be supported by the board. How would I know? For the past 26 years, I have been a biotechnology entrepreneur, executive, and investor. Our portfolio and client companies have attracted over $1 billion in private and public capital. $5 billion in development partnerships have put 12 new drugs and devices on the market which have made life-saving differences for lots of patients. This resulted in more than $10 billion in sales and several hundred very high-paying jobs. Now, talent like that, for our companies, is an insatiable demand. We can't get enough. But talent like that does not grow on trees, and it is not born. It requires being identified at a very young age. It requires the education and the nurturing and support which one day will lead it to the pinnacle of science, engineering, and medical capability that contributes to our society and builds the wealth of this nation. So, I urge you very strongly, as someone who has a very firsthand knowledge of doing this sort of thing, to, to consider this course load tonight as worthy of your support. I'll go one step further. I've met with Mr. Klein, Dr. Grayful, Ms. Devlin, and I've offered any support that our companies and our worldwide network can provide in the form of mentorship to these students, not only at North, but we hope eventually to the South and to others within the district, perhaps reaching even down to the elementary level. That will take the form of mentoring from top scientists, engineers, and physicians worldwide, which includes the Nobel laureates in my network, as well as opportunities to visit with entrepreneurship programs at Harvard, and MIT, and Princeton, so we can provide additional role models for translation of research science into benefit for products and for broader society. Thank you for the chance to speak, and I urge you to support this proposal.
Thanks, Scott. Thank you, Scott. I do want to just interject to say that Scott has been a great resource to us, has been open and willing to talk about all the different connections that we can make with him and the number of people that he knows, and I think it's gonna be a real asset, should this course be approved, to be able to actually reach out for private-public partnerships and be able to put our kids in the hands of some mentors as well as great teachers in our school district. So, thank you, Scott.
If you'll allow me 10 more seconds to just get a plug in. So, on the 20th of May, the Science National Honor Society induction is, is holding its annual induction at Council Rock North High School. If any of you have a chance to attend, I strongly urge you to do so. These are the creme de la creme of the sign students and those top teachers, some of whom will be supporting the proposal tonight. In addition to that, I've got two very special folks appearing with me that evening to provide some remarks to the students to illustrate to them as to how they can translate their science education into wonderful careers, including one of the top scientists in the world. So, I hope to see you there on the 20th.
Thank you, Scott.
Excellent. John Rochay?
Good evening, John Rochay, Wrightstown Township. I took some time tonight to try to go through some of the budget information that you're gonna be considering since preliminary budget is up for vote tonight. I have spoken numerous times over several years about fund balances. I continue to be confused by some of the district positions on how much money of the taxpayers the district continues to hold. I am questioning in the, in the presentation that happened at the meeting on the 16th, there's this, there's a page that talks about fund balance decreases of $4 million from 2014, '15, and $8.5 million in 2015, 2016, and yet the only two audited fund balances shown in that presentation show relatively unchanged numbers. So, I don't know where this increase or actual decrease is supposed to be happening. It seems that the unassigned fund balance continues to grow. It shows as of 2014, June 30th, if you add in what's being put into the budget, as well as what is left as unassigned, we're talking about almost $12 million. I don't understand, I continue to not understand why the district feels this need when they have so many other balances available to them. I also do not understand anymore the purpose of the property tax rate stabilization part of the fund balance. It's sitting unchanged between June 30th, 2013, and June 30th, 2014. What concerns me about it sitting unchanged is I worry that whether it's this board, down the line, or future boards, may choose at some point in time, when there is a year that you might otherwise have to exceed the Act 1 fund balance, thereby triggering a referendum, that this is $4 million you'll be able to use to avoid such a referendum. And I want a position taken that that is not the purpose of a stabilization fund, that the stabilization fund is to take a year such as this, which is already not a bad year, 1% increase is not a bad year, but to take a look and say, well, can we take that 1% and cut it even further by removing this, or removing a portion of this stabilization fund? What worries me is if the budget had been, for example, this year, a 3% increase, would part of the stabilization fund have been used to bring it back under the 1.9%, which to me would be subverting the will of the law? The other point that I'd like to make, and this isn't about the courses, I have no problem with the particular courses, the STEM research, I also saw at one of the middle schools, we're going to introduce garage band for the students. I personally don't quite understand why students need garage band. They probably, most of them have it at home. I don't know that they need it in school. But one of the things that I saw as a responsibility of the business administrator is to provide a specific cost of the educational program to the board. And I think that probably, in its writing, means the overall education program. But I do think it would be a healthy development if anytime there's a proposal for a new program, if it were clear to taxpayers how much more this new program is costing us, and/or are those costs being offset by a program being reduced. Thanks very much.
Thank you, Mr. Rochay. Nancy Carroll?
Nancy Carroll, Newtown Borough. I'm here to lobby for a full-time integration specialist in technology. Council Rock used to have two, and now it has zero. Next year, both high schools will be in a full swing of the BYOD program, and the pilot shows that the kids and the teachers are doing amazing things. Because BYOD is a unique tool, teachers are able to engage students in ways that they would ever not, otherwise not be able to. Students are learning 21st-century skills that will be useful in college and the workforce. They have easy access to the internet and information. They have the ability to do flipped teaching, where the students read at home, and then they actually do the analysis and the writing in the classroom, and the teachers are able to correct them in real time. Every student has access to their work going to, without going to the library or the lab, and it reduces the use of paper and photocopies. Students have 24 access to the tools and resources they use in the classroom and the ones they use at home. So, very few assignments are left behind or incomplete because of a snowy day or absence. Students also have 24 access to their teacher. Many school districts already have BYOD. Donegal School District has on its web, in this decade, it's no less important to teach children how to use their other technology brain as to teach them to use their physical brain. To ignore such an obvious and powerful augmentation would be irresponsible. Certainly, there are better ways to use digital devices to make us more effective beings. These better ways should be taught. Colonial School District, Warwick, Havertford, all have BYOD. Even the school districts that don't have BYOD, such as Central Bucks, still have technology integrated. Every student has access to their work going to, without going to the library or the lab, and it reduces the use of paper and photocopies. Students have 24 access to the tools and resources they use in the classroom and the ones they use at home. So, very few assignments are left behind or incomplete because of a snowy day or absence. Students also have 24 access to their teacher. Many school districts already have BYOD. Donegal School District has on its web, in this decade, it's no less important to teach children how to use their other technology brain as to teach them to use their physical brain. To ignore such an obvious and powerful augmentation would be irresponsible. Certainly, there are better ways to use digital devices to make us more effective beings. These better ways should be taught. Colonial School District, Warwick, Havertford, all have BYOD. Even the school districts that don't have BYOD, such as Central Bucks, still have technology integration specialists. Some school districts morphed from BYOD into one-to-one. New Hope-Soulberry started BYOD in 2013, and this year is giving laptops to the entire high school, and Chromebooks next year to the middle school. Westchester started BYOD in 2006, and it's now in a full one-to-one laptop program. Lower Marion started one-to-one in 2010. The instructors for integration technologies at Mello or Marion are assigned to the curriculum department. The capital plans, all three groups recommended improvements in technology. One wanted to pay for it by closing a school. That didn't happen. So, now, you have to figure out how you can infuse integration technology specialists into the budget. As far as I know, there's no five-year-old plan. The middle schools won't be fully operational to do any kind of BYOD for four years, and there's no plans for the seven elementary schools that are not fully hooked up to technology. Council Rock is by no means, in any way, on the cutting edge of what is going on in technology in school districts. It's on the bleeding edge. And if you don't do something soon, triage is not going to be enough. Thank you.
Thank you, Nancy. Steve McGill. Steve, thanks for being patient.
Considering our symphonic opening tonight, I thought this was, I was going to read it anyhow, but it's even more appropriate now. This is from a friend up in Syracuse, by way of Texas. It says, it's dated April 17th, 2015, says, "My dearest students, next week you will take the State of Texas Assessment of Academic Readiness exam for math and reading." They have a better acronym to it, stands for STAR. "I know how hard you have worked, but there is something very important you must know. The STAR test does not assess all of what makes each of you special and unique. The people who create these tests and score them do not know each of you the way I do, and certainly not the way your families do. They do not know that some of you speak two languages, or that you love to sing or draw. They have not seen your natural talent for dancing. They do not know that your friends count on you to be there for them, that your laughter can brighten the darkest day, or that your face turns red when you feel shy, smiley face, emoticon. They do know, they do not know that you participate in sports, wonder about the future, or sometimes you help with your little brother or sister after school. They do not know that you are kind, trustworthy, and thoughtful, and every day you try to be your very best. The scores you will get from this test will tell you something, but they will not tell you everything. There are many ways of being smart. You are smart. You are enough. You are the light that brightens my day. So, while you are preparing for the test, and in the midst of it, all, remember that there is no way to test all the amazing and awesome things that make you you." Thanks.
That's fantastic, Steve.
Well said. Any further public comment?
Mike Thorwart-Holland. As a scientist and an engineer, I figured I should come up here and actually put in a plug for this new STEM course as well. I was thinking back there, I've been in decade number three of doing these things, and I realized, as I walk the neighborhoods and talk to people, that some people don't know what STEM really means. They know the acronym, they know science, technology, engineering, math. I tell them that engineering is a fusion of science and math. Technology's the glue. Sometimes it's the goal, but mostly, it's a combination of things you're learning in the classrooms anyway. As a parent, I can tell you that you'll always see some, your child come home someday and say, "Why do I have to learn this?" And that's because we teach them math, and then we teach them science, and we teach them social studies, and we teach them English. So, these STEM courses, these STEM lessons fuse it all together and form a spark, hopefully, for these kids, so they want to approach this and do these kind of things, much like the gentleman said before. We need them. Hopefully, we can spark more young women to do it, because we certainly need those. It's not something, as a man who's been doing this for a long time, sees a lot of. So, I'd like to put in a plug as well for this. A famous gentleman, Theodore von Karmann, he was a mathematician, physicist, and an engineer, said, "Scientists study the world as it is. Engineers create a world that's never was." So, we need that in this country, and I really hope you can find a way to fund this. I don't think it costs that much. And as someone who's hired your seniors right after graduation as interns, you're doing it right. You can even do it better. I'm really impressed, and like the gentleman before, we've thrown in our support before. If you need more mentors, you've got me. Thank you.
Thanks, Mike. Any further public comment? Okay, with that, we'll move to our first discussion item around benefits with Ms. Trioli and Gallagher Benefits.
We have a couple people in the audience who are here specifically for the STEM position. Would it be possible just to consider that first before we move on to those two discussion items?
Sure.
They're likely to be involved.
Yeah, we're, item number one. Ms. Brooks, would you read the motion, please?
I move to approve the honors experimental research in STEM course as presented in the course frameworks attached.
I thank you for moving this forward, just because I know we have some people here. Renee and Therese, why don't you come on up at least, and be visible. Renee, Devlin is our science coordinator, and Therese Grayful would be the person who would be teaching the course for next year. Mr. Desko, I'm just going to ask you to speak very briefly on the staffing requirements for next year after what you told me today, correct?
Correct. In working with the North administrative team, because of the enrollment for the course, they'll be able to reduce one of the sections of another area, so this will not come with any staffing increase as we move forward.
So, to the point that we had introduced in the finance committee meeting, at least on a staffing level, this will come in a zero percent, zero cost increase. There'll be some requirements in terms of equipment and supplies, but we'll take care of those within the regular budget, and they're not a large piece of what we're going to be doing. So, Therese and Renee came, just in case you have questions for them about the course and where we're.
I was wondering if Dr. Grayful could just tell a little bit about the course, explain the course a little bit for the board members.
I think that would be great.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so, the idea of this is to provide a course that rather than content-driven is process-driven, which so much of science is. We've been involved in science fair in our district. We started the high school, and we've now spread to the entire district for the past 10, in the past 10 years. This would be an opportunity to actually have a more guided approach. These kids would be able to pick any subject area in science that was of interest to them. They would do the research in real journals, public journals, and professional journals. They would develop a project. They would design an experiment. They would execute the experiment. They would fail at their experiment. They would fix their experiment. They would then be allowed, or they would then be presenting this in some, as many forums as we can, whether it's written and sent into a, there are, I think at this point, three secondary science journals that they would be allowed, you know, allowed to submit an article to. There would be the science fairs that we're already involved in, and there are others as well, that would allow them forums for presenting. They could also present to groups of mentors as another forum. We have identified sources of mentors, and the idea would be also to get mentors for all the students, so then luckily I wouldn't have to know absolutely everything. It would also be within the scope of what we're planning, to allow students to do research outside the school, so that they could do part of the time in a lab. We already have students that have been at Penn, have been at Fox Chase, USDA, and that would give them some time and credit within their schools for what they're actually already doing. Oh, and this, for this, so the idea, this was, this year we would start it at North, it would be a shuttle course for South, would start with one, one section, and then next year it would also be added to South.
So, does that mean that there's been a faculty member identified at South to observe this, or?
We've been talking to Jerry Fetter. Jerry Fetter is very interested.
I could not be happier to support this. This is an absolutely fantastic idea. I want to congratulate every innovative thinker who developed this, to bring this to Council Rock, because it's really out-of-the-box thinking. I think it helps Council Rock stand apart. I personally, because I have a son who graduated from Council Rock, is currently in a doctorate program for science, I can, I understand fully what benefit of being able to touch research like this in high school is, it's just an extraordinary opportunity for students who are interested in this. I mean, of course, once you get into college, you're going to start this for my son, he's continued into a PhD program to do it, but if he would have been able to have a hands-on experience and have the opportunity to have his interests nurtured in this way, and particularly with no cost addition to staff as a board member, even better. But I applaud everyone who thought about this and created this, because it is an exceptional opportunity for students. We already, just in over the years, how our science programs, science fairs, all the extracurricular things that are available to students, how that has continued to grow is something that I think is a huge point of pride for Council Rock, and I just could not thank you all enough for bringing this to us.
Barry, how many students put in for this, for next year?
I don't think we have the specific number of students that are.
No, we haven't, we haven't even begun to recruit.
Well, I guess my question, there was a discussion, so I wanted to understand, that's what I was trying to figure out, because Barry already expressed that this is going to take from another class, so that we're not going to have an expense. So, my query was, how many kids took that, that aren't going to have the other class? Because my second follow-on question is, how many were from North and how many were from South? Because then the next question becomes, I'm going to imagine where that goes, which is, are those even numbers, or was there a preference that North took it more than South? Should it only be at North, unless it should be at South? And it's just, you know, I, if it's a valuable program, and it seems to be, why this, that's what I'm trying to understand.
Well, I think the conversations have been jointly between North and South with the intent to pilot it and get a sense of how we can offer the course, make it run, but allow students from both high schools to participate in the course. From a staffing standpoint, the intent was to reduce a section from the courses where they think students would most likely come from, because I think you've identified what that sequencing would be, where we would get where students would typically drop a particular science course to enter into this course, and looking at that and projecting forward, they believe they could do it, and they will be able to do it without any staffing increase.
No, I hear it. I guess my question is, there are two ways to do a pilot. The two ways are, you pilot one location, second way you do a pilot at a second location, because you have the variability. You know, we talk about, in science, you talk about innovator reliability, you talk about variations of raiders, or in this case, you talk about variabilities in instructors, and allows you then to make an assessment at the end of the year between the two, choosing the preferred functions coming from each or the techniques of each to build the best final course, which is in an operating continuous manner. And that's all I'm trying to put forward, which was, if it's great, shuttle courses, my problem with shuttle courses is there's logistics struggles with shuttle courses, of the kids pulling out the course, the class before, or of the class to get to the other one. This is not an easy load to take the class, and I don't want to see the kids taking it from South casually.
So, we've thought through all those. Where it's placed in the school day, and how we'll get kids back and forth, we'll conquer that. The paradigm is also exactly how we did AP Environmental, and we started at South in that course, correct? And then generalized it to North the next year. And it gives us that chance to actually watch the process unfold and to make sure that we understand what the kids will be doing and how it plays out before we try to take off too big of a chunk. I think the one course, one-year start is exactly the right thing to do, as we develop those deep relationships for mentors and those opportunities to pull from outside, and then we'll see what that incubator looks like as we expand it further.
And in that regard, I obviously certainly endorse the course, and I guess my problem is that sometimes we start slow, and sometimes we start slower, and I would imagine, and my question is, as you look at it, we're approving it tonight.
As a course framework.
As a course framework, right, which, and although it's listed here in the narrative as running as a shuttle course, if demand were to exceed, you're authorized to run the course.
Here's what I would say back to you. If we have 40 kids at each high school that want to take that course, we'll come back to you and talk to you about what that potential would look like.
Well, that's, that's all, I mean, I'm approving the framework tonight, so I'm interested to know, the questions I asked, that we all said, we don't have the answers yet. Those will remain as questions. I'd love to see the answers.
It was cart and horse, and we couldn't put the recruitment of students ahead of, or presumptuously ahead of.
But sometimes you want to run two horses at the same time.
Well, we've been, let's just say the horses are in the boar and ready to start kicking. We've been doing that work. At this point in time, we know where we think the interest is. Obviously, Therese has been a wonderful resource at North, and Renee has been working at South. So, if we're lucky, I mean, ideally, and I speak only for myself, but I think Renee and Therese would agree, ideally, we'd have four courses running next year, maybe six. You know, that, ideally, that would be wonderful, but you also have to understand that those kids all are going to need other kinds of resources, the kinds that Scott just spoke about, and Mike just spoke about, and they aren't going to come in a short period of time, they're going to have to come over time and over cultivation. So, I hope that's what this looks like, that in a couple of years, you have two, three courses at each high school.
So, all I ask is if you just alert us to the name.
We will.
I agree with everyone, what everyone has said. It's not often someone comes and asks us for something, and the board member offers them more than they've asked for. So, take it as a compliment that there's a huge amount of support for this. Everything you read in education, everything you read in higher education talks about STEM. It's great, great, great work that you've done. We appreciate it.
Thank you. We won't disappoint you.
I'm sure you won't. I agree with Jerry. If you wanted to, too, I would be okay with that, but, you know, you guys have to do what you feel is right as well.
Dr. Foster?
So, Dr. Grayful, you're taking on a huge challenge, because each student's going to have a different project and a different mentor, and that's a pretty complicated class to run. I think it's unlike any other class we've probably had. And so, definitely enjoy the challenge, and it's impossible to fit that process of advisor selection, which is one of the weirdest dances in graduate school. You know, for instance, in what sororities, they have rush, I believe. There's a kind of rush that occurs, where people get matched up, and sometimes it doesn't work out, and sometimes projects don't work out anyway. It's complicated, and I hope you have a good journey with it. That FaceTime with mentors, that passing ideas to them, is going to be so critical to make this work, and it may involve emails, or Skypes, or telephone calls, or what have you. And the reality is, the better the scientist, the less time they'll have, the more inaccessible they'll be. So, it's, it could be in a complicated environment for you. I, like everyone else, am highly supportive of it, so keep us in the loop as to how it's going.
Okay, thank you.
Any more comment? May I have a roll call vote, please?
Dr. Foster?
Yes.
Mr. Grubb?
Yes.
Mrs. McKessy?
Yes.
Mrs. Sexton?
Yes.
Mrs. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Block?
Yes.
Mr. Abramson?
Yes.
Mrs. Brooks?
Yes.
Thank you very much for coming out.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Scott, thank you.
Okay, now we'll go to the benefits update.
Christine?
Good evening. Approximately one year ago, we came to you with a similar presentation regarding the current state of healthcare benefits, and also providing an overview and a comparison of the Bucks Montgomery County Healthcare Consortium. We felt like this was a good time to refresh that presentation and bring you up-to-date information for this school year and for the decisions that you face. and for the decisions that you face regarding the consortium. And also, I think it's timely to do a general overview about where things are with rising costs in healthcare. And without any further commentary from me, I am going to turn it over to our partners at Gallagher. With us tonight, we have Ms. Christine Brown. She is our senior consultant. We have Mr. Belmont, who is the area president, and Kristin Cotts, who's our consultant. So, this is our Gallagher team, and they will give you this presentation.
Thank you, Christine, and thank you again for the opportunity to present this evening. So, tonight's agenda, and Kristin is passing out hard copies of the presentation, we will provide a summary on the Bucks Mont Consortium, considerations for Council Rock School District, the importance of prescription drug stop loss, a cost comparison of Council Rock on a standalone basis compared to the Bucks Montgomery County Consortium, as well as our recommendation. Some key statistics that we wanted to mention tonight. There are 22 school entities currently participating from both Bucks and Montgomery Counties. The 22 school entities represent 11,500 employees and 28,000 members. There's a 42-member trustee board with equal management and labor trustees. Each trustee has equal voting rights. Management trustees are appointed by the respective school entity, and labor trustees are appointed by the PSEA Mid Eastern Region President. And we do like to note that not every labor group is provided a trustee seat. There is a potential to expand school entities to include community colleges. Some considerations for Council Rock School District consist of the overall governance of the Bucks Montgomery County Consortium. Council Rock School District would lose the autonomy and decision-making that is not aligned to the specific needs of Council Rock School District. The governance is not designed in a weighted manner, meaning that larger districts, like Council Rock School District, would have the same vote as a much smaller district, despite a much greater number of contracts in the consortium. Labor has an equal vote as management, and Council Rock School District would lose the ability to make decisions as an independent entity. This slide is a bit hard to read, but what it does is it goes through the differences between Council Rock School District on a standalone basis and the consortium if Council Rock School District were to join the consortium. So, the first section is the claims experience. So, the district's claims experience is running better than norm. And what we do is, we compare Council Rock's claims experience to normative data with Independence Blue Cross's School Book of Business. Currently, the districts maintain their own experience. However, the consortium is evaluating blending their claim experience. So, as soon as July 1st, 2016, the consortium may blend all of the experience together, which may have a negative impact on Council Rock School District. Plan options. As a self-insured group, the district has the ability to design plans that best suit the needs of all employees and to contain the costs. So, currently, there are two plan selections that Council Rock School District offers employees. In the future, we can negotiate with the union many different options, and we can customize those plans to meet the needs of the union, the different union groups, as well as the experience of the group. In the consortium, there are three plan offerings that are offered, and this eliminates the district's ability to customize the plans. The plan actuarial values. So, there's, the actuarial values of the plan are the value that, it's actually the value that the insurance company pays for the plan. So, you can take a look, and you can see that the plans that are offered by the district are very, very rich benefits. So, the personal choice five is almost 100% in value, and the 10-20-70 plan is about a 98% in value plan. The, on the Bucks Montgomery Healthcare Consortium side, they offer three plans. They also offer the 10-20-70 plan, and they offer the 20-30-70, which is pretty similar in plan value. It's almost 97%. And then they offer a Keystone Point of Service Plan at about a 96% plan value. And the reason why the plan values become important is because the actual costs of those plans are based on the plan value. So, when you look at the healthcare consortium, their plan values are all very similar, and therefore, their costs are all very similar. When we look at wellness, we have the ability at Council Rock to create a customized wellness plan that is specific to the district, so we can take a look at the actual prevalence of diseases and what's going on specific in this population. For example, if there was a high prevalence of diabetes, we can create a wellness program that focuses on diabetes. Under the Bucks Montgomery Healthcare Consortium, there is a $3.50 per employee per month fee that is required, and that is for their wellness program, and that is for the entire consortium. So, it's based off of the needs of the entire consortium, not specific to Council Rock. And then the final thing on here is the stop loss. And this is an important topic. So, under Council Rock School District, we have stop loss protection for medical and prescription drug, which means that if there are any claims that reach a certain threshold, there is a reimbursement, there's protection back to the district. So, we have protection up to 200, protection over $250,000 per individual. For the Bucks and Montgomery Healthcare Consortium, stop loss is only offered on the medical. And they, currently, the consortium offers three stop loss thresholds, 150,000, 200, or 300,000. And if this consortium begins pooling, all of the school entities would move to one consortium-wide stop loss deductible as of, as soon as July 1st, 2016. So, there is potential to lose the option of picking which stop loss deductible you would like to choose. So, that takes us to the prescription drug stop loss coverage. Prescription drug is a hot topic right now, because we're seeing prescription drug costs exceed at a rapid pace, specifically specialty drugs. They're very high-costing medications and can cost, some of the drugs can cost up to $500,000 per treatment. And they're supposed to, they're expected to rise dramatically over the next several years. So, this chart shows a 17% growth rate per year. And what the chart is showing is the percent of total drug spend for both the medical and the pharmacy. So, in the past, the prescription drug as a percentage of medical and pharmacy was a small factor, and we're starting to see that grow pretty rapidly. By 2018, the prescription drug spend is expected to be half of our overall medical and drug spend, which is, which is pretty, pretty amazing. And the reason why this is important is because it's important to have that protection, that stop loss protection on our plan. So, right now, we do have that protection on the Council Rock plan. And if we move into the consortium, there is not that protection on the plan. So, that's one reason why it's very important to have that protection on there.
So, can I, can I ask a clarifying question?
Sure.
So, when you talk about the medical spend and the pharmacy spend, so, medical is anything, hospitalization, it's everything?
Correct.
So, you're saying we're headed to a place where 50% of our healthcare spending as a district is pharmacy?
Correct. This is in general. So, this is not specific to the district.
Okay.
This is, this is in general, what we're looking at for, from a trend information, we're starting to see more services moving from the medical to the prescription side.
So, this 17% growth rate per year, which is projected, means that since half of our plan is this, more or less half of our spend, it's about eight, we should expect 8% a year increases?
No, not necessarily. It's just saying where the prescription drug may go. That doesn't necessarily mean that the medical is going in that.
No, no, I mean, just even ignoring medical. If we just look at that growth, given that it's about half of our total spend.
It's not half your total spend currently.
Okay, what is it now?
I'm not exactly sure what it is now, but it's not anywhere near half the cost. What this chart is illustrating is that in the future, it's expected to dramatically rise, because we're starting to see drugs that are coming on the market that are costing, you know, $100,000 per treatment.
And all I was trying to do is, in our budget this year, our spend went up, I think about 8%, $2 million. And it, I just don't know whether that's the kind of increase we can be expecting in years to come. I mean, this number would make me think, yeah, that could, that could just keep going and going year after year. So, that's all I'm kind of...
We're start, we're seeing the pharmacy spend increasing, but we're, because of these drugs. But the medical, we're seeing not increasing as rapidly. But I wouldn't say that that's necessarily what we're expected to see year after year. And we have, you know, we have talked to Christine and Bob about different things that we could potentially do about putting protections on the plan. But that all has to be also negotiated. But it doesn't necessarily mean every year you're going to get an 8% increase.
But the reality is, if these trends continue, that stop loss insurance is going to become more and more costly as well. I mean, there's no, there's no free lunch.
So, we're starting to see, to your point, it used to be that prescription drug, you could have a bad year prescription drug, it wouldn't move your costs even a point, because it was such a small percentage of the overall spend. And to your point, if it's going up, you know, that's eight and a half points on top of whatever the medical increase is, if you get to that 50% area. So, and I think the point of this slide, or the point of this slide, is that where we were years ago, where stop loss over drug didn't matter, today, we're seeing costs for claims that exceed the stop loss limit, you know, $250,000 just on drugs for an individual, not counting some of the medical expenses. So, it is just becoming a bigger and bigger piece of the overall increase. And it's one that we monitor with the district to make sure we understand where those are coming from. And I think it just, not to go on about this piece, but one thing everybody should be aware of is that where it used to be, we would come here and talk to you about the pipeline of drugs that are out there. And, you know, the pipeline would be the next brand, the Nexium that was coming out, or whatever. Everything now is focused on these specialty drugs that are coming out at costs, you know, average of about $5,000 per dose. So, you know, somebody's doing, and most of them are drugs that somebody's are going to be on for the rest of their life. So, it is a very evolving area that is increasingly a cost area that we have to watch with all of our clients. And in a district, we have a series of districts in another county where they have a bunch of employees that go to the one doctor. This one doctor loves a drug called Actar. That drug, which was, used to be $6 a dose, is now $50,000 a month. So, we've got, you know, five employees in different districts in that county that are now $600,000 claims a year.
Thanks so much for your explanation and perspective.
Can I ask a question on that? Are you starting to see employers debate carving out some of these treatments, or treating them differently, or putting caps on them?
Not so much the caps on them as much as really putting in, and I think this is what Chris and Kristin were talking about, the management programs. So, one of the things about these, especially these drugs, they are maintenance drugs. So, that means that there's no way, there's been enough testing over time. It sounds like your students are going to be the ones testing them over time, as all the scientists are going to get out of here. But there's no way to know what the impact of the, on the body that is of having these maintenance drugs. So, what a lot of our clients are doing is putting in management programs that simply say to the employee, the dependent, you can have the drug. If that's what you need, you can have it. But we'd like you to try these traditional medications first, before you take the jump to that specific. The other thing that you see coming up, so these drugs, one of the things about them is some of them become ineffective if I don't follow the course of treatment. So, you are seeing a lot more in some of the, like in Express Scripts and some of the other pharmacy benefit managers, where they're coming out and they have counseling services that are advising the patient of how they stay compliant with the drug, the things they need to do in order to get the best efficacy out of the drug.
Because you could spend that money in for not.
Right. I think the other issue that we are seeing, because you asked about limits, and we do see some programs putting on higher copays on these drugs. Some of them are, and there are people that need these drugs. So, we have some that are looking at 100, 200, $300 per drug copays. One of the things, and I think this is as we consult with you, is where we're careful, is to make sure you don't price your employer or dependent out of getting the treatment they need. Because then, you know, they won't get the treatment. They'll become sicker, and they're under the medical program at a much different level, and you're going to have a high-dollar claim another way.
Yeah. I wasn't looking to do it, I just...
No, I know you weren't. It's a delicate balance out there right now.
People are trying to look for some alternative solutions, because it's hit some people very hard.
And some of the caps aren't, just, just aren't available anymore because of healthcare reform and having to remove many of the caps.
Let me ask, the stop loss threshold for medical and prescription drug, that's combined. That's one threshold for both?
For us.
Right, for us. And with the consortium, it's, for the prescription, would just be the stop loss threshold? I think you said it's...
Just for the medical. Today, it's just for the medical. It's something that, the consortium itself will have to move to stop loss sooner or later to have that encompass the drug, because it is such an important part of the medical spend. And again, you look at 50-50 at some point down the road, it'll have to be combined. So, right, today, they don't combine it. There isn't a stop loss for the drug. So, just wanted to take you briefly through the costs. And this is just the fixed costs, not the claims costs. So, from a stop loss insurance, and the stop loss is based on 2014, 2015 numbers. We don't have the renewals for either yet. Our stop losses cost less than the stop loss through the consortium today, a variance of about $11.16 per employee per month. The IBC administration fee, because we are a smaller group of people, is about $17 higher than you would have through the consortium. The consultant fee, the fee that's paid to us compared to the fee that's in the Bucks Mont Consortium, is about $2.85 higher. And then the wellness contribution that's in the Bucks Mont. When you roll that together, the difference in the fixed costs, so the fees, is about $8.47. With your current number of enrolled, that equates to about, savings of about $137,000 a year compared to the overall medical cost of about 18 million, or little less than 1% cost savings across all of the employees who are enrolled in the plan. Any questions on that at all? I was hoping the drummer would stay here so we could get a drum roll before this, but... I just, so we went through the consortium, and we do this every year for the district, because the Bucks Mont Consortium is a viable alternative. At what point it becomes the alternative that the district wants to pursue really is up to you and your team in terms of, does it make sense? We would say to you that for a change of less than 1% in the district's healthcare costs, not... not that a hundred and thirty-seven thousand isn't a lot of money, but it's a, it's a change that, I'm not sure it's worth it from a cost perspective. You would achieve some savings in the first year, but as Chris and Kristen went through, there is some flexibility that you lose in moving into the, the Buxmont Consortium. We've talked about the stop-loss and the fact that the stop-loss wouldn't be included at, in the current format. I think as you, as you go through the recommendations and if, as you look at the information, the district has a history of being very collaborative, a good partnership with the associations as well as with the district in managing your healthcare costs. And I think one of the things that when Chris and Kristen hit on is if you look at the plan designs currently in the consortium, you're limited to three. And they don't vary very much from a cost perspective. So, outside of the consortium, you maintain the flexibility to design those as you will need to in working collaboratively with your association. There are some concerns. At some point, we did a comparison for you at one point on the Cadillac tax. And when we talk about those actuarial factors, the ninety-six percent, the ninety-seven percent, a lot of those get to what the cost of the plan is. And if you trend that out long-term, then we're talking about in twenty eighteen, looking at the Cadillac tax and what the impact will be to the district at that point from a cost perspective.
What's the entry dates for the consortium? Is there a particular?
July one.
Of each year?
Mm-hmm.
So, I guess the issue is what would be the savings to give up the loss of autonomy? Because it looks like, other than the stop-loss, everything else is all equal, or pretty much?
You'd lose, you have the Personal Choice Five Plan that you would need to retire if you went into the consortium. They, you have to go to one of the three plans that's in there. We didn't touch on that. You have two plans you offer today. The ten twenty seventy is a plan that's offered by the, the consortium, and the PC five is a plan that's not offered by the consortium.
There's more substantial differences.
It's, you would lose that one plan, right?
But I guess to me, is the loss of autonomy versus, what percentage?
What about the claims difference? What about the difference of our claims, which is most of our spend being, running at a better rate than?
Wouldn't that be reflected in the savings?
Your claims would be the same.
For the first year.
Well, you mean?
Till they join all of everybody's claims together.
Correct. Mm-hmm. Other questions?
Press.
These drugs that you're referring to, are they, are we curing cancer or are we managing?
So, some of them are cancer drugs. You know, probably some of the big ones that you saw originally were for rheumatoid arthritis. You'd see those commercials on TV, the Embry-alls and those of the world. So, it's really ranging. And I think what you're seeing now is with the drugs that are coming out of research and development are drugs that are really impinging on some of the traditional areas of therapy. So, you know, what started out as being, you know, focused on knees and shoulders, you know, now they're looking at all kinds of different issues. The one drug we were talking about started out as a, a drug for childhood tremors, and now, you know, I think they're treating baldness with it as well. So, it is just, they're using these drugs in all kinds of different ways at this point.
But let's be honest, they're, they're actually, the, the nature of drugs is changing. There, there is actually curative, most drugs are either palliative or, or treating of, of symptoms. There are actually curative drugs. There is now a product on the market that has a success rate against hepatitis C. After you spend a hundred and ninety-three thousand dollars to go through the ninety-day course of drug, you have a high potential not to have hepatitis C anymore.
Right, which is different in my mind than whatever you use as an example for one physician likes a particular drug, five employees going to that one physician. I don't think one physician is necessarily treating five cases of hepatitis C. What are, what are the more common curing, I'm sorry, Jerry? Simpler types of diseases that we're talking about for conditions?
Kim, go ahead.
We, we have, cancer is, is one of them, and hepatitis C is another one. There's, there's hepatitis C that has come out that has new drugs on the market that basically what many doctors were doing where they were stockpiling patients. So, they were taking patients and not treating them for years because these new drugs were coming out that could potentially cure them. But the drugs, as, as he mentioned, costs hundred, over a hundred thousand dollars in some cases. But it may reduce some medical spend because you're actually curing patients by taking these, these medicines. But it just, in the past, we never needed this protection on the prescription because there weren't these types of costs on the prescription where now we need the prescription, the protection on both the prescription and the medical. That's not always the case where we see cancers and, and hepatitis, rheumatoid arthritis, those types of things we see. We do see some types of abuse as well, but we've put some certain things, certain protections in place on the plan to make sure that that doesn't happen. And that's what we're, we've been going out and talking to all our groups about is to make sure that those protections are in place. But hepatitis is the big one, and cancers we're seeing as well. So, the traditional treatments in the hospitals are moving now towards more taking medicines as opposed to the more traditional treatments.
Thank you.
But those, that change in hepatitis C really represents a shift in costs, I think, because the folks that were going to have liver failure, liver cancer, it would have been years into the future, potentially after they were, were not employed or maybe on Medicare. And, but now, because of the success of, of a really new medicine that's going to prevent all that from happening, but, but the employer has to, has, has to pay that.
Right.
And in the long run, if drug discovery and development does its job right, this scenario is going to become more common. So, if there's preventative treatments for Alzheimer's, instead of putting all that off to the future, we'll pay for it earlier. So, I'm just saying, this, if, if things go the way everyone dreams they would go, this will be more of a problem in the future for entities like us.
It's, and, and, but the other side of it is, and Bill, you're exactly right. It's, it's always laid underneath drug and the, the, the use of medicinal product, medicinal products and hospitalizations. There's always been that thing, I know in the, in the central nervous system, in the CNS realm, there was always a discussion about people who would come off of their treatment for bipolar disorder, schizophrenia, that once they came off, the hospitalization was massively expensive. So, there was that trade-off, which was, do you pay for potentially an expensive drug, but it keeps them out of the hospital? Or if they come off the drug, then they wind up going in for a prolonged expensive treatment. So, it's the trade-off. It's not a solution. I'm just trying to give you more insight into, you know, the challenges within the drug industry and the, how it fits into the whole medicinal practice of medicine.
Thank you very much for the time and effort tonight.
Thank you.
And I, I do have to say that while you guys are here, our partnership with Gallagher and the kind of work that we have done with them in terms of sorting through the issues here and the fantastic service they provide to Council Rock in terms of not only the benefit recommendations, but the customer service store close, top-notch. Thank you very much for all your good work.
Thank you.
And I hear good things about the wellness program in the consortium.
So, now we'll move on to our discussion of the preliminary budget for two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen. Mr. Reinhardt?
Good evening, everyone. In front of you, I hope you have the new preliminary budget document. And also, you'll see the PDE two thousand twenty-eight, which is the state form that is required to be up on the, for public inspection. But I would encourage you to look at the budget document because the state form really is very summarized and will not give you the information that the budget document gives. We have done some work since our finance committee meeting last Thursday night. I'm waiting for the presentation to shine up on the board. But we've done some work and we've been able to reduce the budget to what we agreed on, and I'm going to go over that as soon as that lights up. Okay. It's getting lighter. The first document that we have been reviewing is in the first column, which is the first draft, and you received that about three weeks ago, I guess. At the time, as Mr. Rocher mentioned, it was a using fund balance of about eight point five million dollars. Since that time, the document that you have in front of you and will be posted on the web tomorrow morning has made the adjustments. Revenues are up two hundred and fifteen thousand dollars, two hundred and fifteen thousand. Salaries, you'll see, have been reduced, and you can go through everything and see where we are from where we were to where we are now. And I'm going to go over them a little later. We are down to five point seven million dollars of use of fund balance. If you remember, we were going to use about two point three million dollars of the Pizer's rate stabilization as we discussed. Also discussed, now that we have, are planning to eliminate the per capita tax, it's another four hundred and fifty thousand dollars of fund balance that we are going to use. And, pardon me?
From the rate stabilization fund, right?
We were going to use that from the rate stabilization and any proceeds we may be getting from the LaKeen Martin. Also, the undesignated fund balance each year, we've been comfortable in using about three million dollars of fund balance out of the undesignated fund balance. And with one percent variances that have been favorable in the past between expenditures and revenues, we generally have not been necessary to use that. So, this year, we have, and we're going to use about five point seven million dollars of fund balance. You will see with the information I showed you previously, we're at five point seven million dollars. And we actually adjusted a little more, and that's a story I could tell you about rounding in the state form that caused that to occur. And I could explain it to you, but you really don't want to know. How did we get there? Preliminary budget includes a real estate tax increase of one percent or one point one five mils. Property owner with a house with the homestead, the median homestead value of about thirty-eight thousand dollars would experience a tax increase of forty-three dollars and seventy cents. Please understand that properties that are assessed higher than that will have a higher tax increase. Properties assessed lower than that will have a lower tax increase. So, I guess average is only to the property owner that has an average home. Anyone has a higher home, it's more, and anyone has a lower home, it's less. Also, the per capita tax have been eliminated from the preliminary budget. That's about, net effect is about four hundred and fifty thousand dollars of lost revenue, if you would say that with the way we are funding it. Now, let's go to the part that, of the adjustments that have been made to the expenditures or the appropriations, I should say, since you've gotten the last budget, well, since you got the draft budget. You remember that we talked about the healthcare increase that was the second look? That actually made our costs go up, three hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars. And if you go back here, you'll see that that's one number that was at twenty million. It's up to twenty point seven million dollars. The collection costs associated with per capita, we don't just eliminate the, the revenue, we eliminate the costs associated with collecting that revenue. Curriculum and instruction, we had some changes, reduction in one staff nurse, technology, we had some reductions. Elimination, the purchase of the South High School band uniforms. Please understand, I'm going to go through these quickly. You can ask questions, and anyone on cabinet that is responsible for these items can be very specific in what is going on. Human resource budget was reduced by eighty-four thousand dollars. We did reduce the, the additional maintenance staff member. We took a partial reduction for the assistant superintendent and the secretary because we believe that that position will not be filled first thing in the year, so it'd be only a portion of the year that would be, salaries would be paid. Reduction in the budgetary reserve, this is, we've gotten very tight with where we are going, and I've reduced the budgetary reserve from seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars to a hundred and two thousand dollars less. That was really the number that we needed to get to the, the goal of our use of fund balance. Through this process, we've been cleaning the personnel, and that's two hundred and eight thousand dollars reduction. I will tell you, that's increases and decreases and things as we found, as we've gone through the process, it has changed by two hundred and eight thousand dollars. That is not just salaries, that is salaries and benefits. So, that's retirement, that's, could be life insurance, it could be all kinds of things in there. And it's a real host of things. I didn't try to identify every change that we made. Installation of the propane fueling station, we are taking that out of capital, so that has been taken out of the budget. And finally, buildings and grounds, we've reduced areas and buildings and grounds by four hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollars. In total, we've reduced it in combination, I should say, we reduced it by one point two million dollars. If you consider the increase that was necessary, we've actually cut the budget by over one point five million dollars in certain areas.
Mr. Reinhardt, a quick question for clarity since we've received probably more than several emails on this topic. The reduction of the assistant superintendent and secretary, was that a combination of both roles together and a percentage?
Yes.
When it was, okay, so it wasn't like you eliminated the secretary position as an example?
No, this is a combination, exactly. I really took a proportionate share of each of the areas and. Does everyone have that? Are any specific questions before I get off this line for the administration? Anyone want to know more?
The other ones, the band uniform, we didn't need to do it this year?
Oh.
Go ahead.
And Mr. Desto can help too. The band uniforms were, were a cost that they're, they're definitely needed at Council Rock High School South. Instead of putting them in last year's budget, we're going to use this year's budget to, to fund that. We'll couple together a couple of different accounts and make sure that we buy it for Council Rock South by the end of this year so it's ready for their band season next year. So, it's eliminated as a cost in next year's budget.
To, I guess to be conservative in planning your, your budget, you, you're assuming that there's an elimination of the per capita tax. But there has not been any vote on that yet. But you're building that into your projections?
During our discussion last Thursday night, I believe I was told to move forward and begin the process. Not to say it's been voted on no, but I've been.
But what we're looking at is on the, on that assumption that is the elimination.
Yes, yes.
But it's not funded in the budget from tax. It's funded only as an additional debit on the budgetary reserve, or, excuse me, on fund balance.
Next steps, the budget forum Wednesday, May thirteenth, we will be there. And I'm going to do another overview of the revenues and probably focus on EIT again and give you whatever update I have on that and all the other revenues that we could talk about, give you an understanding if any movement's been made on the governor's proposal, budget proposal. I'm not expecting that there will be anything. We'll review the appropriations, and if there's any focus you'd like us to have it, appreciate any emails or anything so I could focus on any area there. And then, as we always have, we, we'll have it set up where we, we'll have a question and answer period that we'll gather the questions, and then we'll all try to answer the questions, that is either by the audience. I think, I think we also have an email address that you could go from home and email to us. The board meeting on Thursday, the twenty, uh, May twenty-first, I will give an update as I always do, and you can have discussion on where we're going with that. The finance committee on the Thursday, May twenty-eighth, I think we really need to refine the budget and really focus on where we want to be for the board meeting on June fourth. And I'm hopeful to have the final adoption of the two thousand fifteen, sixteen budget on June fourth. Again, the reason we do that is to ensure that we get the. Again, the reason we do that is to ensure that we get the tax bills out by July 1st to, to start the discount payment period that goes on. If we go later into the month, we may not get them out in time, 'cause there is a process that goes on after the military is established.
What time is the 13th?
I don't know that we...
6:30.
6:30.
Here?
Yes.
When will we know from the state? First of all, what's the relief to each property owner now from gambling? And when will we know the number?
I believe it's around $205, or something such as that right now. And I'd have to go back and look, 'cause it changes every now and then. They have established the number that's gonna be distributed, but we haven't gotten notification of what our number is at this point. I think that might be May 15th, or something like that. One thing that you would see is my budget document that you see shows an estimated, um, homestead reduction of $5 million, and some pennies there. But the state form does not allow me to even put it in right now.
And I always mention this because that's, that's a per-property relief, that if that changes, while we talked about on the, on the, um, median home of 38K, um, the 1% tax, the 1% increase now looks to be $43.70, even taking the median. If that number changes, what the state gives us is less, then that number will go up.
Yes.
If they give us more, that number will go down. They don't really give it to us, it's passed on to them. So it's just, and, and just reminding everybody one last time, that number is, as I'm very careful to say, year in, year out, that number is a per-property number. It is not tied to the value of the home. It is...
Correct. That is a assessment exclusion, so it's really a lump sum for each property, it doesn't matter the size, it isn't a proportionate exclusion. One thing I would say is we should remember that with a, um, property, I mean, the, um, per capita tax going out, there is a savings to each, uh, could be two people in the home, should this go through. It would be a $10 tax, or a $9.80 tax at discount for each person.
Right. So using that formula, using that notion, so the 43, on the median home with a husband and wife, we're looking at a $43.70 increase and a $20 decrease on the per capita. So the net would be 23.7 profit on the median, medium home.
Yes.
Well, that's assuming that you're using it from fund balance and not increasing the property tax to offset the elimination of the per capita tax.
I'm, I'm using the numbers he showed here.
Right, but this is just a projection, that could change.
I'm using the number, yeah, that's what I'm using. Anything, lots of things could change.
Any more questions? Any more questions for Mr. Reinhardt? Dr. Foster?
I don't know if it's a question, I guess it's a comment, might be grandstanding.
Why not?
Why not? That's what we're here for. So the, uh, the, between the healthcare and our share of PISers, so the healthcare increase was $2 million, sorry, health insurance.
I brought it back up, you can...
Right. And our share of the pension increase is 2.4 million. So between the two of those, it's 4.4 million. And this, so those are real costs to us.
Yes.
We can't get away from them, they're, uh, something we have to deal with. The, the 1% increase represents, what was it?
1.4 million dollars.
1.4, so 1.4 million does not 4.4 million make. So, you know, hence, we're digging in to our fund balance in a significant way to deal with these unavoidable costs, right? And instead of trying to pass it on to the taxpayer right away, we're, we're not, we're not doing that. So, um, those are real costs that we have to pay. On the per capita, in terms of grandstanding, I just wanted to say, so the average assessed value, the average real estate tax bill is around $4,000. And we use a stamp, and we print an envelope, and we put some paper in that, and we mail it out. And, and hopefully, the person pays their real estate tax bill, and we get the $4,000 for, to run the school district. The $10 per capita, we do all of that, we use the stamp, we use the envelope and all that. It's a 400-fold difference in efficiency. 400-fold is always worth looking at. So I don't know why we have the tax, and I, I'm hoping it goes away, 'cause it's as inefficient as it could possibly be. Thank you for letting me grandstand.
Thanks. And then I might take that and run with it. You talked about the fact that the costs are going up, but the taxes are keeping pace, which means we're finding efficiencies in there, which I think is, is a good thing. I had a quick question for Mr. Frederson as a follow-on from our meeting. You had requested a half a position around technology, is that still what's in this current ledger, or have we moved that to a full?
With the exception of the maintenance position and the reduction, we had a tentative addition to the STEM course, which we're not gonna build in there. Every other piece of the personnel requests that we put in there are still there. So the .5 STEM specialist at the elementary school, the .4 increase in curriculum coordination for math.
HR?
The, yeah, the .4 HR specialist to deal with all of the new requirements under child protective services and clearances. Remind me, what else? That .5 technology integration specialist?
You have a .5 technology integration specialist, a platform coordinator, your .4 HR, they're involved, the, um, .5 STEM.
Got all of those, okay.
And the half of the assistant superintendent, the half of the confidential.
Right, so, so I would just say this, I'd applaud your efforts to, to find efficiencies to ensure that we can, uh, you know, keep a, a lower tax base against some of these increasing costs. But I'd also encourage you to prioritize within that to make sure that we're doing the things that are gonna drive academic performance, uh, to where there was a lot of appetite around a full-time position in technology, and maybe not so much around, as an example, the secretary for the assistant superintendent, or even the assistant superintendent. So, you know, I, I, there's gonna be a lot of discussion on this, which I know is gonna be great, but I appreciate Dr. Foster calling that, that, that work that you guys have done in there.
So, um, and I'll grandstand for a minute and say simply, where you land on the assistant superintendent is entirely up the board, and you give us the direction on that. We simply were pragmatic in our approach to the assistant superintendent. There's no way you're gonna hire a superintendent, allow them to start, and then have an assistant superintendent at any time before January, February of next year. So we made that corresponding reduction. It would be smart to fund it fully in the budget, just so it stays as a placeholder for the following year, but it still is within that type of the board, or whether that, that stays in place or not. But we felt strongly that the, and it basically amounted to 1.2 or 1.3 positions, 1.3 total positions in the budget was worth the people that we're keeping in there. If we wanna raise, the technology integration specialist has been suggested, we can easily do that. But the one thing I know Bob agrees with me is that, it, given the way that we've been the last couple of years, and we have been very frugal in our tax increases against the total spending, there just is a, is a, on, is a potential hurdle that this board is gonna face in a year or two, when the fund balance actually begins to get applied fully, and we haven't raised revenues to approach some of the things Dr. Foster just talked about. There's nearly $4 million of increases in this budget between PISers and health increases that aren't gonna go away, and we fund it partially because of fund balance, because we've prepared well for this time. But it's just, there, there is a point in time where you're not able to get the extra revenue, as was very stupidly pointed out, and there's only so much fund balance you can apply before you're out of the act one index. So if you go below that 1%, there is danger in doing that, that you've not put revenue into your budget to help offset some of these costs that are outside of our controls, and we need to put revenue in place to make sure that at least we partially account for that revenue increase against the total costs that are in the budget.
I wanna, I stepped out for a second, we were speaking of the budgeting for the assistant superintendent. There was discussion about that in the newspaper, I wanna be very clear. Mr. Klein has run the district for the majority of the 11 years, he was here, if I'm repeating anything, with several other, please stop me. For the majority of the 11 years that Mr. Klein has served as superintendent of the school, um, he has not had an assistant superintendent, with the exception of the first year. When Mr. Klein moved from his role as the principal of Holland Elementary to the superintendent position, the district, uh, reached out to Bob Winters. Bob Winters was a former superintendent of schools for the Central Bucks School District, and had returned to Council Rock, uh, as a principal, and then had retired. And Bob came back and took the role as assistant superintendent. Part of that reason was to allow Mr. Klein to acclimate to the role of being superintendent, and to also, there are some aspects of that role, for anybody who is new to it, who it, it's better to have someone there as a support. It, it's not a long-term solution, but it's certainly an important part. As we look at what is under discussion for Mr. Klein as he retires, and we look to appoint someone, it is no, it's been in the paper, we're looking at someone who is outside the district. I would imagine, or is the potential, that Mr. Klein would serve in a role not unlike Bob Winters had served for him, as someone who is not here as a permanent assistant superintendent, but to help make that transition. Even were he not to be involved in that way, we wanna assure as a board, I'll speak for the board from this perspective, we wanna assure as smooth a transition to a new superintendent as we can. If a board member takes issue with that, please let me know. So, we wanna do that. That's a nor, there's gonna be a normal overlap. So my whole point in this discussion is, will we have a secretary for it? I don't know. But it is certain that Mr. Klein will need to be paid for the period when there's an overlap between our new superintendent and the outgoing superintendent. In my mind, that's part of that fund, that bucket of money that's listed as assistant superintendent. So, has the board made a decision about, we'll forever have an assistant superintendent? Candidly, no, the board has not made that decision. Would that be a decision that the new superintendent would have input to? I would think, yeah. So just for those people who've seen the article and take issue, and oh my God, look, there's another $200,000, $200,000, it's not a, first of all, it's not approved by the board as a permanent thing. It's not, the number of was, as we saw, there was a $100,000 reduction. And at, at, at a minimum at this point, I believe it was necessary to be included, because it needs to help include the transitionary costs of landing and, and getting a new superintendent in the position. So I just wanna give some context of what was in the paper.
So then you're suggesting to put that in, not as a partial, that it's there?
Well, it's already there, it's been reduced, it's been reduced in the, excuse me, in the proposal we're seeing this evening by $100,000 from the combination of the assistant and the secretary. I, I believe we're gonna use part of what that's in as a partial now, in the transitional period for Mr. Klein to the new person. And then I think we're gonna go to dormancy when Mr. Klein is no longer the assistant. And then we'll have a period where we may not, we might hire one, if, if that's the direction of the board and this new superintendent, or we might not. So there will be, we'll spend for the, during the transitional period, it's gonna go to dormancy when Mr. Klein leaves, and then it, the board in consultation with the new superintendent will decide when or if to hire an assistant superintendent there.
I just wanna be clear, you're, you're not saying that I'm gonna go to dormancy at some point in time, right? I'm not a crystallis or rabid.
You and those, you and those babies that are gonna be running for the Marchadimes run.
Got it.
Mrs. Thomas, do you have a comment?
I just was gonna start with a point of clarification, but I'll just make my comment now, 'cause I know we have to vote on this later, so I didn't know whether to make a comment now or later, but now that I've said that, I'm gonna make my comment. The biggest part of our budget is an unknown. I applaud all the work that's been done to use fund balance. I know that I have been an annoyance on this board about that. And my friend, Mr. Rocher, has also spoken to it. So I want to first say, I appreciate there's $5 million of fund balance being slated to be used, I see that, know that. But the only increase I'm prepared to vote for at this time is the increase I agreed to when I voted to build new schools, which is a quarter of a percent. And while I think we do need somebody in technology, and I would like to have that person, I don't have the flexibility to raise it the other .75 that's proposed, because I don't know what my biggest expenditure's gonna do. And so before I can start agreeing to a 1%, when I really don't know what salaries are gonna be, is not a place I'm comfortable. So I will not be voting for the 1%.
All right, why don't, why don't we move on to the, the consent agenda? Mr. Abramson, could you please read the motion?
Well, we're taking out of the consent agenda, the items, the last three items indeed, the first student, the roads energy, master purchase, sales agreement, and the proposal for installation of propane fueling stations. They'll be stated separately.
Yep, we'll get to those at the end.
So with that said, and that modification, I move to approve the consent agenda, items A through I, as contained in the attachments to the agenda, subject to order.
Second.
Yes.
Mr. Cox, have you, have you reviewed the medical transport, transport systems contract?
I reviewed it in preparation for tonight's meeting. Can you show me where it is, please, Mr. Brook?
It's item D, medical transport systems, transport, transportation contract. I, I just, it's not marked with your review, and the, the reference to the rate refers to a daily rate, and then it also, on the next line, refers to per trip. So obviously, those two phrases are contradictory, one on the other. Where it's setting the transportation as, as per day, daily rate, and then underneath that, you'll see breaking up for transportation of a student, transportation of a second student, and the addition of a EMT. Those are written as per trips, it, so it's, the line above that, those individual bullet points, references daily rate. You can see where it's inconsistent, yes?
I see, I see section five compensation. Is that the paragraph that you're referring to?
I'm working from memory, so, hold on. It's not a big point, it's just that I, I'm not sure why...
I, I also have an issue with the...
Well, I'm finished with the section five.
Well, I'm saying, I'm saying this because, would it help if I amended the motion to say, subject to solicitor's review?
Yes.
All right, so I'll make that amendment, that the motion is subject also to solicitor review.
Second.
So when you look at the compensation section?
I'm sorry.
Who's second was that?
Ms. Thomas did. There were multiple.
That was over there. Who do you have?
Whoever you were down, Capella.
I may want it, not sure, what did this Madam Secretary decide?
Madam Secretary relied on me incorrectly. So who wants it?
I'll do it, and I agree.
Thank you, Dr. Foster.
So yes, Mr. Cox?
So I'm, I'm looking at, at section five, Mr. Brook?
The end of the second sentence, and that, the end of the first sentence says, shall be at a daily rate for the period, and then it says, student without EMT services each way, so that's not a daily rate. If it was a daily rate, I'd have to try, I'd have to rig for a day, for a rate.
I, I interpreted that provision to be, to be clear enough. In other words, it, it's 144 each way for that, for that student there.
So what does a daily rate mean?
It's 144 plus 144.
Yeah, I, I mean, I mean, it could say, shall be, the, the colon could be after shall be?
Well, I guess, I guess my observation with it is, if it's, hasn't been reviewed by the solicitor, and that's one example of phrasing that's wrong, that, is, are there others? So we've added that it will be reviewed by the solicitor is a good thing. The coding system that we're using does help us, because it does alert us when things are not reviewed by the solicitor, but please review the contracts before we...
Well, let me, let me speak to that. I review every contract that is sent to me in advance of the meeting, usually pretty promptly, and I spin my comments back to the administrator that sent it to me. Now, with this contract, this is a form that we've approved many times, and the district has been using many times, um, over the years. It's basically a good form. I looked at this contract not because any administrator sent it to me in advance of the meeting, I looked at it, um, in about two days ago, as I tipped... the meeting, I looked at it in about two days ago, as I typically do, to prepare for the meeting. It looked pretty good. I think that provision, Mr. Block, with respect to what the district owes, is clear enough. I like the fact that the contract had a termination for convenience provision, so if it's administered in a way that's problematic, the district can get out easily. If you prefer that the colon to that clause be after agreement or, or after shall be and that it's limited to those three provisions, I'm good with that. And I can make that change to the version that Mr. Block signs.
And, and my issue is not so much with you, Mr. Cox, my issue is, how do we know which contracts are going and which ones are not?
You have an SR mix of them.
How do we, how do we make the determinations of which ones are going?
And the ones that have been standard issued, Mr. Cox is right, this same form contract has been approved by the board in exactly the same four, three or four times. You caught a nuance of the contract could be clear, but it, we've been, we've managed the contract exactly the same way. When we have a contract that has been solicitor reviewed in a prior setting and then has just been reaffirmed over years, we don't usually send it and incur the solicitor.
That, and that's a good plan. So, if you would, just so we understand when that happens, because I looked at another contract form here tonight and I was amazed to see that the contract form that we're using, I don't remember which one now, dates from 2006. There's another, one of the many here. There's another contract here which dates in its form from 2006. I think it was professional services, possibly the freshman solutions kickoff. And it just gives me pause to think that we are, that the form, the template was 2008, November 2008.
And, and, and if, you know, sometimes if it's not broke, you know, it doesn't need to be fixed.
I agree.
You know?
I agree.
And that's a good, that's a good form of contract, that, that particular.
My point is, my point was, I don't know if it's the most current one, and that's all I'm looking for, is make sure that we're current on it. So, when you say, well, it was reviewed by, I don't know that it was reviewed before. So, if you want to say, well, we're renewing it, here's our notice that it was reviewed in 2013, I know, but I don't know. So, if you say SR print, when it was reviewed before, because otherwise we get into this habit of going, and we've been there, which says, it's the old form. And we just keep going on. And, and Mr. Cox's point, which was, it's a good form, that's fine. But I don't know when it was last reviewed or if it's been changed before. And we've had instances where we wound up putting up contracts where we went back in time and we took the wrong form, that's all. That was my point, that was my point for the discussion, which was, how do I know what has and has not been reviewed and when? That was the point.
I, I do want to say that I did not view the fact that the administration did not send me this particular contract in advance as, as any sort of problem. It's a, it's a form that's, that's a favorable form to the district. Could that one provision perhaps be a little tighter? Yes. But even with that, that verbiage in it, this is a, this is a relatively favorable contract for the district.
I made the determination not to send it, Mr. Block, because of it being the same contract year after year, I take the full responsibility.
It comes down to process that, that's all I'm asking for, which is, because, how do we know why the decision was made? That's all I'm looking for.
I understand, and.
It's a renewal contract, great, let's just remember the time that it was reviewed last on the contract form so we move the next time.
We'll do our best to do that. And at any point in time, if you're unsure, just call, we'll let you know that back.
For sure.
So, we're not starting a process now where we're going to be sending over and incurring the cost to Rob?
No.
Well, I'm not looking to do that, I'm just looking at the last time.
I'm saying, I don't want these folks uncomfortable and now they're going to begin to change their process because of this conversation.
No, we're comfortable. We'll just put, we'll figure out another designation, put next to a contract that says, prior review or something like that.
That's all I'm looking for, which was, when was reviewed? Because we have changed certain things over certain times that, and, and, and to the point of policy, everything should be reviewed at some point in time. So, I don't know that if a contract was reviewed five years ago and we're still looking at it and saying, it's okay, it was five years ago, those I might want to review. That might be some cycle you settle into. That's all. That was the point.
Any more questions or comments on the consent agenda? Have a roll call vote, please.
Yes.
Mrs. Sexton?
Yes.
Mrs. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Block?
Yes.
Mr. Abramson?
Yes.
Mrs. Brooks?
Yes.
Dr. Foster?
Yes.
Mr. Block?
Yes.
All right, Mr. Block, if you please.
Yeah, there's the three.
Oh, you're going to take those three? I was going to pull those at the end. You want to take them now?
Yeah, my.
Okay, so go ahead.
I know, but it's changing. I move to approve the propane tank installation agreement with Rhodes Energy in the form attached to this agenda to supersede and replace the form of the agreement approved by the board on April the 9th, 2015.
Do you want to take them all together, one at a time?
I, I think one at a time.
Is there any conversation? Have a roll call vote, please.
Yes.
Mrs. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Block?
Yes.
Mrs. Abramson?
No.
Mrs. Brooks?
Yes.
Dr. Foster?
Yes.
Mr. Block?
Yes.
Mrs. McKessy?
Yes.
Madam Secretary, just wanted to let you know, we have them written out here, so if you want us to pass the paper and.
Please do when we go. Thank you.
I wrote on it.
Pardon me?
I wrote a note, so.
If you give them to me, I'll transpose them on another piece of paper and then I'll be able to.
What?
Did you write something?
No, it's a, it's work product. Okay, never mind, close it off. I move to approve the master purchase sale agreement and transaction confirmation with Rhodes Energy in the form attached to this agenda to supersede and replace the form of the agreement approved by the board on April 9th, 2015.
Second.
I thought you were.
So, the first one was the purchase and this is the installation, which, which one of the, of the agreements we have?
The first one was installation, I believe.
So, this is then?
This is, this is supply.
The master purchase sales agreement.
Any questions, this conversation? Have a roll call vote, please.
Dr. Foster?
Yes.
Mr. Block?
Yes.
Mrs. McKessy?
Yes.
Mrs. Sexton?
Yes.
Mrs. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Block?
Yes.
Mr. Abramson?
No.
Mrs. Brooks?
Yes.
I move to approve the transportation service agreement with First Student Inc. in the form attached to this agenda to supersede and replace the form of agreement approved by the board on April 9th, 2015.
Thank you. Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Thomas. No conversation, questions? Have a roll call vote, please.
Mrs. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Block?
Yes.
Mr. Abramson?
No.
Mrs. Brooks?
Yes.
Dr. Foster?
Yes.
Mr. Block?
Yes.
Mrs. McKessy?
Yes.
Mrs. Sexton?
Yes.
All right, Mr. Block, if you could read item number two?
I move to approve the proposed 2015, 15, 16 fiscal year budget according to the terms of the Form PDE 2028 attached, presented by the administration on April 23rd, 2015. Having approved the preliminary budget, the Board of School Directors may make revisions and changes thereto as it deems advisable, it being understood that no sooner than 30 days from the date of this approval, the board shall adopt a final budget in accordance with the Public School Code.
Second.
Discussion?
So, this is just, the state requires us to pass a preliminary budget in advance and this does not tie us or commit us to anything. It's part of just the process to begin public conversation, correct?
Yes, and other than having to do all the sessions that we have to do now.
Mr. Reiner, do you recall what the preliminary, what the, what the percentage was in the preliminary budget last year?
0.83 percent, 0.8 something percent.
Last year? Was that 0.9?
I thought it was 0.9.
0.9.
And do you remember what the final budget was that was passed by the board?
0.6.
0.6, right. So, I, I, I'm glad everybody remembers, I did too, I just was trying to, trying to gauge people.
We know, we know you are, Dr. We know you're trying to make a point.
So, I guess, and, and to Mrs. Brooks's point, it's a requirement that we pass preliminary budget, there's still opportunity to change things, there's still opportunity to carve things out, as the fellow next to me, Mr. Abramson, spoke to, it could go up. It typically hasn't, I don't believe it has in the time I've sat on the board, gone up from those preliminary. But it is, it is forced march in terms of a process. So, every year, we vote for this budget and ultimately, there'll be final, for the final budget, there'll be people who don't vote for it, there'll be people who do vote for it, the numbers will be different, and typically, as has always been the practice, it goes
So, consistent with some of my comments, the finance meeting, I won't be supporting this budget. I think there's an opportunity for us to move closer to zero, I don't know if we can get there, but given it's a $1.4 million tax at 1%, I think we can move that number lower. I think in the past, we've been, Mr. Reiner, I've been very effective managing to a number that we've typically used for capital projects and given the fact that with our middle school project, we're taking on 83 million of those capital improvement dollars, maybe there's an opportunity to continue to lean on fund balance and get that a little bit closer to zero. I'm also thrilled that this year, we're going to consider pulling out the per capita, per capita tax and giving back some of that money to the taxpayers, so my vote will be consistent with some of my comments, the finance meeting.
When is the vote for the per capita tax elimination going to be on the agenda?
So, if you approve the budget tonight as it is placed, we will advertise for it as we are required by solicitor recommendation over the next three weeks. It does not mean you have to eliminate it, but it advertises to the community consistent with the code that we, we are going to consider that. Then, Ms. Reiner and I's plan would be to offer the resolution to eliminate the per capita tax on June 4th prior to a vote on the final budget, so we know and can manipulate the final budget for that. So, if that meets with the board's approval, that will be what we would suggest.
Any other comments, Dr. Foster?
Oh, I, you know, I just want to, and I mentioned this before, but you can go to the Bureau of Labor Statistics and look at the inflation rate as far back as you want to go. You know, and since 1998, it basically bounces around 2%. And that number is about where the Act One index is. We're, we're not immune from the laws of finance, we buy paper, we buy electricity, we buy healthcare, we, we buy all kinds of things, we're part of the economy. So, the idea that raising taxes 1% when inflation is, has been for over a decade, 2% represents an increase, it's not even keeping up. It's, it's Alice in Wonderland, you know, running to stay in the same place and we're, we're not even staying in the same place. So, I, I think 1%, given the pension liability and the specialty drugs, if, if we don't have increases at least in the 1% area, we're just going to dig ourselves in a hole so deep we'll never get out. The fund balance will be gone, it'll go very fast, and we will have one choice, which is to cut, and that's it. It's just that simple. So, that's my opinion.
Respectfully, I've been on this board for nine years. We've never voted for a tax increase at the rate of inflation, it's always been less, and we've tripled the fund balance in my time on the board. So, I hear you, but until I start seeing tangible evidence that the fund balance, seven years, it came on in '08, I always count this number wrong, since Mrs. McKessy and I came on at the same time, she always tells me the right number, but it came on in '08. And so, I hear you, I certainly understand the theory of recurring revenue expenses and this administration has heard ad nauseam from me some of this, but until I see numbers, real numbers on a paper that back up what you're saying, it's really hard for me to buy into that because every year, the fund balance goes up and we have never raised taxes at the rate of inflation.
Yeah, but there, I mean, I think the reasons for that are.
And we've had an increasing pension fund at enormous rates.
No, not, the, the enormous rates of increasing pension fund, $2.5 million pace per year, really only started a couple of years ago.
Yeah, but in the seven years I've been on the board, with the fund balance increasing.
We're, we're in, we're in.
And taxes not going up.
We're in the storm now, it's, it will decrease our fund balances, it's, it's not a fantasy.
I'm waiting.
Well, you're going to see it, if, if, if you wait, if you wait too long.
One year, Bill, that's all I want to see, one year. High time, yeah.
It's, it's coming. I mean, you.
The only reason we were flat last year is because we moved $3 million into capital to pay for summer.
But you can't, you can't argue with the $2 million increase in, in, in our healthcare, you can't argue with another $2.5 million, it's real money.
I can't argue with $2 million in healthcare and I've resisted saying this all night, now I'm not going to be able to resist any longer. If you look at three-year average of our healthcare expenses, we beat everybody at average. Yes, we had a big increase this year, but we've had very unusually low increases for the last few years, bizarrely low increases. So, when you average it out, yes, and could it go up 8% next year? Absolutely. And could there, you know, but I'm just saying, I was good until we went to the Alice in Wonderland. I understand the numbers, I understand recurring expenses, we have never raised at the rate of inflation and our fund balance has grown, so.
And I think it's declining enrollment, but those years of rapidly declining enrollment are also behind us.
So, hopefully, fund balance goes down next year and then you won't have to listen to me anymore.
Are there any other comments?
Yeah, but it's.
Anybody else over there? No? Okay, Mr. Block, back to you.
Are you taking bids?
No, I just want to make sure everybody gets their.
You had a fair share of talking tonight, that's what we're saying.
Nothing new there, nothing new there. Let me, it's, it is an interesting discussion when you look at it, you say that, you know, the, the Act One index is 1.9%. It, and when you look at the percentage of our large budget, our budget in this case, we're looking at $2.54 million, hell, 70% of that, $140 million is, is staff. And, you know, so you take 70% of that and that's going to have a large chunk which is going out to Peters. So, when you look at it and you say, well, this board is talking now about a 1% increase, it's interesting because when you look at what it means is, for that 1% increase on that, the, to me, that really means running in place with what happens with our employment contract, where people get step movement, many people still get step movement within it. And that's just covered in the step movement, in my opinion. To Mrs. Thomas's point, which is, you know, but it's going up. It does, and, and one of the reasons it goes up has been, or is in part due to the earned income tax. And the earned income tax is extremely fickle. We've had years, Bob, I look to you again, we've had years where the earned income tax has gone up 12%.
Over the last three or four years, it's gone up 25%.
Over the past three years.
Yeah.
And we've had years where it dropped off 12% in a year back.
That would have been 2008 before I got here.
You weren't responsible for it.
No.
You weren't responsible, I got that message. So, I understand, so, Mrs. Thomas, I hear it and I, and you know it well and I think the board knows it well, but that's, you know, this is one of the things that goes into the calculus by, by other members of the board about what is it that we can control and what is it that we are, are subject to, to the variabilities of the board. So, as I said before, it's 1% under discussion now. So, as I said before, it's 1% under discussion now, I don't think it'll be 1% when it's all done, I think it will be less than that.
Any other comments? May I have a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Abramson?
Yes.
Mrs. Brooks?
Yes.
Dr. Foster?
Yes.
Mr. Grub?
Yes.
Mrs. McKessy?
Yes.
Mrs. Sexton?
Yes.
Mrs. Thomas?
No.
Mr. Block?
No.
So, help me with this, you guys don't want to start the conversation? I'm happy to start the conversation, I'm at 2, I'm .25, as has been said, I can go up or down from there, but if I'm voting on it. But, so, this is the conversation.
Wait, wait, we've moved on, let's go on to the next thing, we can discuss it, we've got, we've got a month to work through this now. So, let's go on to number three, Ms. Thomas, if you could read that, please?
I move to approve the personnel actions as contained in the attachments to this agenda. Second.
Questions for Mr. Trelle.
Hearing no objections, I'd ask the secretary to note the motion passing with unanimous consent. If we could go on to number four, Dr. Foster, please.
Uh, study, number four.
Both of them, please.
I move to award technology education supply bid 15 dash 01 for the 2015-2016 school year to the number 15, vendors listed in the total low acceptable bid column at a total cost not to exceed $16,730.48 as contained in the attachment to this agenda, subject to audit.
You want to go ahead and read both of those together, Dr. Foster?
I was, I was both of them.
Yeah?
I moved to award, I also moved to award the science supply bid 15 dash 02 to the number 10 vendors listed in the total low acceptable bid column at a total cost not to exceed $26,528.84 as contained in the attachment to this agenda, subject to audit.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. McKessy. Any questions? Hearing no objections, I would ask the secretary to note the motion passing with unanimous consent. If we could move on to number five, Ms. McKessy, please?
I move to approve the agreement with Dewey Engineering Incorporated for the design, documentation, bidding, and limited construction oversight of Council Rock High School South deflection repairs at a cost not to exceed $8,800, subject to audit.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Abramson.
Mr. Taylor.
Yes, as you recall, this was something that was discussed last year when we talked about summer projects, and we did an initial investigation of the floor, determined that the cause was the concrete planking that had cracked at one of the cores by the length of the room. This is to address that repair and repair the floor over the summer before the kids return. The majority of our summer projects are addressed through a different professional GKO architects, this was isolated to a structural engineer review, therefore, it was Dewey Engineering. So, we're looking for the approval so we can get this work done this summer.
Just want to be very clear, because we have seen this at a public meeting in our facilities, that the, the floor, the way it is designed, is intended to have a certain amount of flex within it, and the way it was constructed, that flex was restricted on another portion, was supported somewhere else, so that, that crack actually is, is not significant in terms of structure or safety, it really is reflected in that the deflection, which is acceptable in the floor, was impinged by another part of the building, which caused the crack lengthwise on the, on the beam.
That's correct.
So, it's really, it's.
There's not, the, the structural integrity is, is not challenged in the floor system at all.
So, the primary reason we are repairing it while it's not structural is that it's a trip hazard among other things?
There's a trip hazard, we're going to address the, the separation of the two pieces of plank with a material that will bond them back together and minimize the potential of the floor when it does deflect, as all floors do, by having too much deflection between those two sections and creating damage to the finished floor again. So, we will patch the floor, we'll actually put a joint in the floor at that same location, it's a soft joint, to acknowledge that there could be some minimal difference in movement, but ultimately take care of topping the area and grinding the area to get the floor flush again.
So, a soft joint will look not unlike those joints that we sometimes see in buildings where you have two slabs with a, like, almost membrane between them.
A bead of cau, right, correct.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any more questions for Mr. Taylor? Hearing no objections, I'm going to ask the secretary to record the motion passing with unanimous consent, we'll move to number six, Mrs. Sexton, please.
I move to approve the 2015 to 2018 special education plan component of the Council Rock School District Comprehensive Plan as contained in the attachment to this agenda.
Second.
Dr. Lambert.
The comprehensive plan, which is typically referred to as the strategic plan for the school district, we're in the process of developing that renewal, which will be coming forward sometime in the fall, if I'm not mistaken, the special education plan is a part of that overall plan, but for reasons that are not all that interesting, the renewal cycle dates are somewhat different between the two, so this has to be approved prior to that one being approved. So, what you're saying is the approval of that plan, which basically is our commitment to the community and to the Department of Education, that we are in compliance with the regulations for special education.
Plan itself has been on display on the website for over 30 days in compliance with the requirements of the Department of Education, so it now comes forward to the board for quick.
Correct. That is correct.
Can it be changed through the course of the year?
Sure.
Is it, I don't know what the experience of, of doing this particular plan is, because sometimes a plan is just a, a government requirement, and might just be a tedious process of form filling, and others times, it's kind of fun and interesting, and I didn't know which bucket this plan is for you, or maybe it's a hybrid, but as I read it, it kind of looked like it was enriched for, I don't want to say plan con-like content, but is it, is it a lot of kind of form filling to it?
There's a, there's a large section that's narrative where two things are happening, one is exciting, that we get to work with our teams to identify where we see our strengths, where we see our highlights, and also to look at some areas where we think we maybe could do some, some growing, and it's also for me to make sure that that is expressed in a way that it is assuring that we are in compliance with regulations. There's another section of it where we're describing our classes, which is probably 200 pieces of data each having about four pieces to, that, each one of them that is rather tedious in, in completing.
It has evolved in fairness from when we first started strategic planning years ago, when it was our process, our format, to a far more regular way of reporting to the state, where you fill in, you do fill in the blanks, you do meet their requirements, you do have to fill in a technological form that goes up to the state, and without being disrespectful, I'm not sure who's reading up there.
Yeah, that's what I was wondering.
There's thousands and thousands of pages that are being submitted to a staff that's already overburdened up there.
I know the answer, it's, it's top men are reading them.
But they, I represent what Dr. Lambert says, they're very helpful in our own process, if we do them right and take them serious, and we use the IU, Joanne Parady is a facilitator, and she's a great resource to do the self-analysis, to look at strengths and weaknesses, and define the things we want to key on. So, I think it's a, it is overall a good process, I just wish that forms and formats weren't quite so, so difficult.
Cumbersome.
Cumbersome is a great, thank you, or cumberbun, either one.
Any other questions for Dr. Lambert? May I have a roll call vote, please?
Dr. Foster?
Yes.
Mr. Grub?
Yes.
Mrs. McKessy?
Yes.
Mrs. Sexton?
Yes.
Mrs. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Block?
Yes.
Mr. Abramson?
Yes.
Mrs. Brooks?
Yes.
Right, Mr. Cox, move to solicitor's report, please.
The board held executive sessions on the 16th on personnel, and this evening before tonight's meeting, Mr. Block on personnel and potential litigation, that's all I have.
Mr. Cox, we'll move to board items, and I will have board comment again after public comment, is there any old business anybody wants to discuss? Under new business, we've got a Peasars resolution, Ms. Brooks, you want to give us an overview of that?
Sure, I mean, in, in the plethora of emails that we get and information from the state, I became aware of a resolution that school districts across the state have been sending relative to the Peasars, and the challenge that that poses on to school district budgets. So, this is just an attempt to formalize in some way our opinion that the Peasars burden is exceptional, and it's a formalized way to resolve and, and forward to Harrisburg as an opinion of this board, that we are demanding that they look at this and relieve this burden from the business that we do to try to run the school district.
And Mr. Grub?
We had discussed this, Denise and I had discussed this, it's, it's great to be an elected board of nine, and to try and lobby legislators, but we represent the people who live in our communities, and, and I wanted to ask if we could entertain, Matt, I think we spoke about this briefly, that we would be able to have this available on the website and allow citizens of our community, or anyone, to sign on to it as well as, as supporting the board going forward, so that we would be able ultimately to take this resolution, not only with the, and I think it's more powerful if we change the form of this, that all board members sign it visually rather than the board president, but also to back that up with the signatures of the community.
Electronic signatures.
Their virtual signatures, their electronic acknowledgement that they've signed on and agreed with it. I think that speaks louder, we have elected representatives who need to hear that the people within their environment, how many times have we as board members received notices from people saying, you have to do something about pensions? And we say, it's not us, we can't change pensions, it's state. Matt, are we in a position, with a microphone, are we in a position to, to post something on the website and take?
Yes.
Thank you.
So, would your recommendation, Mr. Grub, be for us to adopt a motion for this tonight and add signatures to it before sending, or would you rather us collect signatures before passing up formalized?
My request would be of the administration to change the adopted date, the projected adoption date to be our next board meeting, which is May?
Seven.
Seven, and to change the form to include the ability for each board member to sign, and consider adding as well, not only that we have signed it, and that we have attached the names and identifiers of, the names of those citizens who have signed on, on the, agreed to support as well on the website, something along those lines. Thought?
I, I think that's a great idea. You know, we'll have a, I mean, make it a deadline that the community has to sign by whatever date.
At the end of our meeting next week.
Right.
We will take those signatures off the website.
Can we just print those out, do you think? I'm just a little worried about the time and effort it will take to transpose that. So, if you do it as a survey instrument off of the web.
If we have the people put in their first name and last name, it'll store it in a database, an Excel type style sheet, we can just print that and attach it to you.
All I want to have is first name, last name, and the township in which they live. Makes sense.
Just tell me what information you need and.
Everybody agree with that, that's all I want to have, is name, first name, last name, township, that's all we need.
Right, so, it's, it's the revision of this document, and then there's something that says, for the public, if you agree with this and would like to sign and have your, your name sent on to.
Forward with, right.
Right.
The alternative process would be to take that document, we could do it the ultra way, just put it forward, the other way is that we could do it ourselves, go forward, and then make it the same function, which would allow someone to take that document and through a webpage, say, I support the Council Rock School Board in this, and it would automatically forward that mail to.
Yeah, I like it better altogether, obviously, nine, nine members of the school board plus 3,000 members of the public.
Agreed, agreed.
I won't sign on to this.
You won't?
No, I won't.
Okay.
I won't, because what, when you ask the legislature to act, very frequently, they do not act in a way that I think is either responsible or at all sensible, we have legislators out there now offering up solutions to this issue that, that don't reflect any understanding of what the issues are. So, no, I don't trust that when I ask what's going to happen, something good will happen. I, I'm happy to support a legislator who comes up with a good, balanced, sensible solution to the pension problem.
Well, that's what this is asking, this is not saying that we will unilaterally agree to whatever the legislature has up, this just puts a sense of urgency.
They, they have been asked, and there is a sense of urgency, and what comes back out of Harrisburg is not worth talking about for me. So, there are, there are multiple reasons I would never sign this, and, but, but beyond that, I, I won't sign it for, I would have abstained on it anyway. But, it, you can put it out there, you can do what you wish with it, people may choose to participate in this, but I have no idea how they're going to get themselves out of this issue, how we're going to change this. I'm hopeful, I'm hopeful that the change in government maybe will help, but we'll see, we'll see, we are so underfunded now in so many ways.
I guess this, all I really says was, we want you to try and do something.
Yeah, I mean, I, obviously, it's not a commitment, if the, if the state came back with something that, you know, we would be monitoring it, and, and we as a board thought it would be detrimental to the program, or to us, or whatever, I mean, we would, at that time, talk to them again, and, and hopefully rally other school districts to make sure that it was a good thing.
We've tried to work on a full funding formula for over a year, you and I went together, full funding formula won't help us, will be bad for Council Rock, but would be good for Philadelphia, and there are so many complexities here.
Mr. Abramson?
Yeah, Mark, I gave you some wording changes.
Yeah, I thought I had.
You may have, but there's a typo, so just to let you know, under the chart, you have a capital A in and, it should be a small a, so when it appears next time, that could be changed, but.
No way.
You're not going to change it?
Right, after you move your semicolon. The semicolon, the semicolon, I'm moving to the other side, I'm, sorry, I turn off the volume.
He is dormant.
Small i.
Officially dormant.
It's good, what are you doing?
You can't believe how hard it was to move that Microsoft Word hand from where it was to over there, took me a little while, sorry.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Small i.
My concern is about resolutions coming to board directors and then coming for a vote, would we draw the line? Other board members may get resolutions, and we put it before the board for board approval, that's, that's my concern, this one, yes, of course, I'm all for it, I think I share some of Patty's concerns. So, let me just get something straight, this is going to appear at the next board meeting, and it's going to appear on the agenda for a board vote?
Yes.
Is that, so it's actually going to?
Well, as I heard, and I, I'm just listening to what I'm hearing, I will have each individual board member a signature line rather than board president and board secretary, so the ones that vote for it can, and the ones that vote don't.
I would, having heard Mrs. Sexton's counter, I think, just leave it, so we will just sign it and print our name on it, that way, there's no obligation to anybody to have their name on it.
So, we'll put lines.
What?
Put lines under it, so each board member.
Because if, if someone doesn't want to have, to have their name on it and not sign it, would.
We don't need to vote, we just want, if you want to sign it, you sign it, if you don't, you don't.
Can it, could it possibly be with the pension issue being in the newspaper every single, every paper, every single day, in every township, in every city in the state of Pennsylvania, that this message hasn't gotten to Harrisburg? How could that possibly be true, that little Council Rock needs to fill out a form, have people go online, and, and. and, and help them to see the issue? Ridiculous.
You haven't got the emails?
Ridiculous.
You haven't got the emails that ask you to fix the message?
I have, I have. And I have to ask, have they read the paper? But, you know, hey.
You do what you can.
Rick wasn't finished.
Okay. The, the other concern, Mr. Cox, is any issues about using Council Rock resources to do this? Putting it on the website, getting public, the electronic signatures?
No, I don't think so. The board, regardless of whether the board approves the, the resolution tonight or some other night, it still approves expenditures by way of the check register and, and other manners, so.
So resolution?
It pays, it pays the bills. The board approves the, the payment of bills at some point.
So, okay, it goes back to my other problem though. The resolution comes to us from either private or public candidacy, and then we put it up on the, for a board vote, and then we use our resources to get it out to the public. This one I don't have an issue with. I just don't know if we're opening the door later on for resolutions to come before us. That's my concern.
Well, I don't feel obligated because we do this one to do, you know, Joe Smith wants a liquor license or some bizarre thing that might be a resolution that comes to us just because we vote. This has directly impacts us, as you said, you don't have a problem, but I'm saying, just because we do this one doesn't mean we have to do any other one, right?
We've, we've gotten emails in the last few weeks about, you know, suggested resolutions for cyber charter schools and, you know, other things. Nothing, you know, I read them all, I'm interested, but this one resonated, and that's why I thought it was worthy of bringing forward.
We had also gone, we had also gone on record as a district for Holocaust and genocide education requirements. So realistically, my, my thought was Denise presented it, I spoke to it. If, and, and Patty spoke to her reluctance to participate in it, and I understand that. If Patty had said, "I object to doing it," or if you were to say, "I object to doing it," then we would wind up potentially making a motion and as a board, looking to have a majority of the board directors, in a very absence of someone's objection to it, I don't see a need to make the motion.
Okay, so we'll move forward.
We'll have it for you as a motion on the seventh, and if the board adopts it, then you can send it forward, and if not.
But we're going to be collecting signatures in the meeting.
I can't help but agree with Mrs. Sexton. It's not like these folks don't understand what's in front of them right now.
I just, I just find it interesting that we're going to be collecting signatures and then voting. I mean, it's, it's good to get the public's input, but what happens when we have a bunch of people to sign it and then maybe it doesn't pass? Not that it, I think it wouldn't. I, I just feel like, you know, we should adopt this and encourage folks to get on the bus with us. That's just how I feel per, feel personally.
We can always post it after the May seventh meeting.
Yeah, I would, I would ju, I agree with Patty. I think we have to commit to it and then if we're committed.
Send it two weeks after we adopt.
We can commit to it now and?
So you want to approve it?
Yeah, I would say, and I mean, we're in budget season with, with them. I mean, the sooner we can get it to them, the better. I mean, are we not in a position to pass a motion tonight in support of this?
Rick will tell you, yeah, if you make, Rick will tell you if you make the motion because it wasn't on the agenda as a motion, I will have.
I agree, I'm fine with it. You, you would need, according to board policy, public comment on that. And then you could introduce it as a motion, or honestly, they're not going to pass a final
Well, does this still need?
State budget until the end of June, and this will be part of, if they're lucky enough to get it done. Some kind of change.
So this, so this still needs a little bit of work and it'll come back before the board for a vote on the seventh? Okay, great. Thank you. All right, we'll move to the committee reports. I don't expect we'll have much since we only had finance since last meeting, I believe. Ms. Brooks, anything for Pat Adams?
I just want to ask, the elementary report card survey site is functioning well now?
Yes, it closes tomorrow.
I had gotten some feedback that, from members of the community, that the site was not accepting additional responses.
That was just this morning. It inadvertently got shut down this morning, but it was turned back on by midday.
There was a lot of chatter about this on Facebook and other social media.
About the report cards.
Yes.
That, at the, the seven, the Home Access Center.
Yes, and, and?
And report cards at the same time.
No one at our community today to apologize for that. It was a server problem on our side, and as soon as Matt, his, his folks got in front of it, we were able to get back up and running today.
Thanks for really discussing.
And we also got a bigger break than we thought on the shipping of some of those books? Right, you think, you told me about that?
Yes, it was reported when we had talked at the last meeting. In, in the presentation, the shipping cost on the math books was, or science books, was eight percent and, and now it's four percent. Four percent, yeah.
Great job. Excellent. Ms. McKessy, anything from Facilities?
Facilities, feels like forever since we've met. We moved our last meeting for scheduling purposes. Next meeting is April thirtieth, which is Wednesday, Thursday, I'm sorry. The majority of the agenda for that will include discussions regarding facilities improvements, capital improvements, general updates.
Thank you, Ms. McKessy. Mr. Grubb, anything from Finance?
We talked about the budget. Now, it is, it is important to note as well that Bob, of the three bond issues that we were going to put forward, we've already gone to two of them. I think the board will remember that we put these forward with pre-approved framework, and that's why they have not come back to us for approval as we move forward. They've already been pre-approved. And there's one more remaining. This is the largest of the bunch.
Yeah, this one is the large refinancing.
So, you know, we, we continue to save money, and I guess after the next one, this will happen this week or next week?
Next week.
So you'll report back?
I think it's next week either, that, it's early the week after. It's fifteen days from the last one.
You'll report back to the board with the final?
I will.
Summary vote.
Dr. Foster, anything from MBIT?
You know, it was actually an unremarkable meeting. The only thing that I recall is a, a great presentation by some of the culinary students about a field trip that they had. And then we discussed these with Dr. Mundie leaving Centennial, and she's currently the superintendent for MBIT. Some lucky person will get to join us, which will be fought among, Mr. Cleveland, Mr. Klang can describe how those battles, the arm wrestling will begin as of next weekend. Very good. Thanks.
Not so many participants. Uh, Ms. Sexton, anything from the IU?
Dr. Galasso has given us all a letter announcing his intention to retire as Executive Director of the Bucks County IU effective September nineteenth. That is the end of his commission with the IU. There's a transition plan that's being worked through. Dr. Galasso will not permanently leave us immediately. He will be probably, we hope, around with us for a bit. He's been so great as a director for the IU and has brought so much money into the IU to keep it alive and to keep our price, price points good. We're going to miss him a lot.
You know, it, it should be mentioned that, that the IU, as we've done our search for the superintendent, the IU has provided Barry in particular, and his assistant, Joanne, have, have really led that effort in terms of doing a lot of the setup and soliciting.
Dr. Galasso does most of that work on his own, on his own time, outside of his salary by the IU. The IU doesn't particularly pay him for that work. He does that work himself and has done it for five or six districts now during the past few years. That, the cost of a, a search?
In there?
About twenty thousand dollars.
Yep.
Today. Ten before, for us, twenty thousand dollars. So?
So it's important to see that, that that's, whether it's value from the IU or it sounds like it's a great, the value from Barry, that's, that's impressive service he provides.
Yep. Okay, we'll move to our second round of public comment. Is there any public comment?
Mrs. Sexton, Nancy Carroll, Newtown Borough. Mrs. Sexton, you've been a wonderful representative of Council Rock to the IU, and I want to thank you for that. The IU is a wonderful place and resource for students, school board members, superintendents, and it doesn't get the accolades that it deserves. I think what you need to do is have a resolution about the high-stakes testing that is required by the states. I hear incidences where kids are so upset that they're physically getting ill. That's the resolution you need. That is on parents' minds. You're talking about the budget. There's nobody here, but if you talk to parents, that's what they care about, is this testing. When you talk about digging a hole, you, the board which has been here for a long time, have dug a hole in this district. When you had two technology integration specialists and go down to Zier, you dig a hole for the technology integration in Council Rock. You, the board, currently have dug a hole. When you approved two building projects of a hundred and ten million that are going to leave every classroom empty of students two periods a day when they go to lunch and when they go to specials, and then have extra classrooms, you dig a hole for the ability of this district to address the other one hundred million dollars in projects for the rest of the schools. And you dig a hole because you're not infusing any capital into technology. I love my kids. I wouldn't let them design my house because our family's not in the one percent. And I couldn't afford, for each of them have their own bedroom and their own lounge, and maybe their own bathroom and their own game room. Because I have to be the adult in the room, and I would have to say no to that. I respect most every single one of the Council Rock teachers and the job they do. Now you have to be the adults in the room. When there are classrooms empty at the middle school level, when possible, they have to share. You can't have, let them have empty classrooms. You have to downsize this project for the good and the needs of the rest of the district and have capital infused into technology so the students will benefit, all the students. Thank you.
Thank you, Nancy.
Michelle Helled, David Roden Holland. I am thrilled to hear about the approval of our STEM course. I'm an engineer working in IT, so nothing makes me happier than seeing this course approved. I'm also really happy that it's going to include the art of mentorship because I know what a difference that has meant to me and the mentors that I have in my life. What I would like to see incorporated into a course where technology is the second word is actual technology. Not just teach technology, but incorporate it into the class. It's possible to save money, since this is supposed to be a shuttle class, and I realize that we don't know the curriculum, not set in stone, the enrollment, where it's going to be, how well it will be received. There are online platforms in use by colleges today where students can be taught by their professor online, be brought into group sessions, and then be split out into breakout sessions and work together on projects on their own. Not every class, even though this is project-based, not every class needs to be taught in person. Maybe we can save fifty percent, but we certainly can teach technology through the use of technology. Thank you.
Thank you.
John Marsha writes Town Township. We got to listen to some grandstanding, and something that I heard really belied a belief that I think is harmful to the public. We, we're told that the board is being very gracious to us taxpayers by using the fund balance instead of passing the cost on to us. What that belies is a belief that the fund balance is your money. The fund balance is not your money. The fund balance belongs to the taxpayers. So whether you pass on a one percent increase or you use more of the fund balance, the taxpayers are paying it. You are not paying it. You are not being magnanimous to us by doing so. And I resent the fact that you are trying to take credit for using our money. I am also extremely concerned that we read a presentation, because the numbers were so small on the screen, there's no way we could tell in the room, and that's not your fault or anything like that. We were told that a million dollars in either revenue increases or expenditure decreases has changed since the initial budget. And yet, the tax increase is still the same. So all the savings is just to reduce the fund balance use. Sounds great, right? Means the fund balance can stay. Except that a couple of years ago, the school board directors changed Policy 620, which aims the undesigned fund balance to shoot for five percent. And at the same time, any amount over five percent gets transferred to the capital reserve. So every dollar that you don't use has a potential to still be kept by the board, just in a different fund. So this reduction, none of it applied toward tax relief, is absurd to me. I propose a firm policy that when there is a change between the revenue, the expenditures, and that allows for a lower overall expenditure, that at least half of the money come from a change in the taxes. If you could reduce the expenditures and increase the revenue by a million dollars, my question is, why wasn't some of that million dollars applied toward changing the taxes? You voted on precisely the same increase that you were given before that million dollars. I continue. Thank you, Mrs. Thomas. I continue to believe that the fund balance in this district is out of control because of a belief that there are elements in the board who want to have funds available to them to use at certain whims. And that has to change. This is the taxpayer's money. Keeping it in your coffers is not in the taxpayer's best interest. You should be keeping the minimum amounts you need to run this district effectively. And I think for many, many years, you've been keeping more, and this is the latest example of a mechanism that allows you to keep too much. Thank you.
Is there any final board comment?
One, I guess, to Barry and Joy. We did already some, we were part of a consortium where we had courses online where there was another district or a group of districts that we had courses that we were running. Didn't we? We, we had that going for a while.
No, we look in, we looked into partnering with the IU, but all of our virtual courses are run by our teachers, built in a platform, a learning management system, and run by our teachers.
So we, okay, I thought we shared what we had with others, because we had, we had other people taking our courses.
Correct.
That's what it was. So we'd already gone down that path.
Yes.
And it only meant that a modicum of success, as I recall.
It was difficult for our teachers to deal with students who they couldn't have any personal contact with and didn't have any direct ability to get the work done.
And it's a, it's a maturity thing. It's really, you're, you're not dealing with college students who have a different drive potentially than high school students.
It worked well with our students. Our, our teachers with our students in the virtual environment works great.
Correct. Most of them were AP kids or?
No, they're across the board here.
Triv, thanks.
Anything for the comment? Our next planned board meeting, anything else, Jerry?
No.
You're sure? Thank you. Our next planned board meeting is May seventh. I will be unavoidably detained through work. Mr. Abramson will be presiding. Meeting adjourned. Thank you.